This work session of the Austin City Council on May 5th, 2020, we're doing this virtually. It is 9:02. Let's take a roll here real fast. Councilmember Harper Madison.
Present.
Mayor Protem Garza.
I'm here.
Councilmember Renteria. Not yet. Councilmember Kassar. Not yet. Councilmember Kitchen.
I'm here.
Councilmember Flanagan.
Here.
Councilmember Poole.
Here.
Ellis.
I am here.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Tovo.
Here.
And Councilmember Alter.
Here.
And one last time, is Councilmembers Renteria or Kassar present? I will look for them when they come in. Colleagues, we're going to start with the COVID briefing.
I am here.
I'm sorry?
For Tovo.
Was that somebody? That might have been a staffer.
Mayor, it sounded like an echo from when I first logged in.
Okay. If anybody has their TV on, make sure they turn it off. We're going to begin today with the virus update from public health, and update about homelessness. We'll hold questions till we get through those and then answer questions. And then we will have the thrust of our meeting briefing with respect to finances and budget and COVID dollars. Does that work for you, manager?
It does. And before we even begin, Mayor, councilmembers, community, you know, I just wanted to acknowledge that this is Public Service Recognition Week, and so we have incredible public servants across our enterprise, across our community, that are doing work to make sure that we are keeping our community safe, and just want to highlight that. We'll highlight it again on Thursday, but this is a chance for us to once again acknowledge and appreciate everyone that is doing this work to keep our community safe. But with that, Mayor, I'll ask Director Hayden to start us off, and then she'll pass it off to Dr. Esq. And then, as you mentioned, we'll have Assistant City Manager Shorter and our consultant Matthew Doherty provide a specific update around homelessness and COVID. So unless there are questions, I'll pass it off to Director Hayden.
The record should reflect that Councilmember Renteria is with us. Can you hear us? You? Okay.
You with us, Director Hayden? Not sure if you're unmuted, Director Hayden? And we might just do an audible while she is getting on. It sounds like Dr. Esq. is on the line, and so maybe I'll turn it over to him first, and then we can have Director Hayden follow Dr. Esq. Dr. Esq., are you there?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Do you mind starting?
Yes, I'll go ahead if I can get IT to put up my slides. Perfect. So again, I want to give you all an update, and thank you for the opportunity to present this update. Can y'all see this slide?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. If you can go to the next slide, please. So what you're seeing here is, it looks like it's reversed on my screen, but what you're seeing here is an update from the graph that I showed you last week. Obviously, in the red bars is the total number of cases, the cumulative cases. The green bar, or the yellow bars are new cases at the bottom, and the green is the percent change as compared to the previous day. So again, we are in a downward trend for the percent increase by day, which equates to now about a 19, almost 20-day doubling rate for us, which is a substantial improvement over where we were a month or two ago. So we're very happy with this trend. Again, we've seen it climb or improve over the past several weeks, from 12 to 14, and now to almost 20 days. So again, good signs for us, and I think this is really reflective of this community's effort to flatten the curve. We have flattened the curve. It is continuing to flatten. And as I discussed yesterday, along with the mayor and judge, we need these efforts to continue, and it's critical that we continue to remind folks that this is not the result of luck. This is the result of an investment in time and resources and effort by the community, and we need that to continue for us to be continued, to continue to have success as it relates to flattening the curve. Next slide, please. So what you're seeing on this graph is sorry, is Travis County Hospitalization Trend. So this is based on data which has been provided to us by Baylor Scott &amp; White, by Ascension Seaton, and St. Davids. And what you're seeing here is, the bottom two lines, the blue line are new admissions, and the orange line is discharges by day. And so you see those lines dance throughout this pandemic here in Austin. There are not large increases in admissions on a daily basis. In fact, they're quite well balanced with discharges by day. But what you see is a cumulative effect over time, and that's resulted in, as of last Wednesday, last Tuesday, 82 admissions, despite the fact that there's only been a small number of new admissions every day. And this is reflective of the fact that people who are hospitalized with COVID are hospitalized for a long period of time, two or three weeks. So when we think about the possibility of overcrowding in hospitals, it may not happen suddenly like we saw in New York. It may happen steadily over time. So we'll continue to follow this trend and follow the hospital capacities so that we can make predictions about when hospitals may get overcrowded. Again, right now, we've relatively plateaued. We've been between 75 and 85 hospitalizations over the past two-week period, and there's still plenty of hospital capacity. So we are in good shape at this stage, but we want to stay in good shape. And again, that requires the ongoing efforts of this community to achieve that. Next slide, please. This is also an update of a graph I showed you last week. I spoke about last week the fact that we had our first week of decreasing cases since this pandemic began in Austin. Last week was an increase, a small increase, about 14 to 15 new cases compared to the week before. But you can see over the past five weeks, the number's been relatively consistent. So we've had between 40 and 50 new cases on average per day. So it's a relative plateau effect, and we're pleased with that. We'd like to see it go down, but as long as it's not going up substantially, we'll still be in good shape. Again, we will continue to monitor that, and those efforts at maintaining that consistency will be based upon how we do as a community, particularly now that things are starting to reopen to some extent. Next slide, please. This is an updated slide in relation to the race and ethnicity of those hospitalized. So this includes people who were admitted and discharged up through last Wednesday. And you can see that we've had a significant increase in our portion of Hispanics and blacks who have been hospitalized. So Hispanic community now represents 51% of those hospitalized, and the black community represents 12%. Both of those numbers are significantly higher than their representation in the community. We are hopeful this week to be able to show you weekly trends as we rebuild the data backwards to show you the week-by-week effect on race and ethnicity as it pertains to hospitalizations. Next slide, please. Again, this is also an update of tests by county. This is based upon DSHS data on May the 2nd. Again, this dataset is based upon tests that had been reported in DSHS, and that they were able to classify a jurisdiction. So there's going to be some variability in the accuracy of this data, but this is what we have at this stage. As we can see, Travis County, the cumulative number of individuals tested per thousand is 9.9. That's the green bar on the right. We can see that Harris County and Dallas County have pulled ahead in relation to their testing per capita. But we are, you know, continue to test and increase that testing. Again, starting last week, we've increased testing by fourfold. So we continue to expect that rate per 1,000 in our population to increase. Next slide, please. In relation to individuals who signed up for the public enrollment process, so we've had about 4,500 individuals that have gone to that site and filled out a survey. We've had almost 2,000 as of yesterday who have scheduled or had a test performed. Of the ones that have been tested and we have results for, that's 735 so far, just with this new process, just through the public health drive-through, 16 of those have been positive, which gives us a positive rate of 2.18%, so significantly lower than the numbers I was talking about last week, which was around 9 to 10%. Now, it's important to remember, this is not our community positive rate. This is just for the APH site. So we're still in the process of piecing together the other testing that's happening in the community with community care, with Austin regional clinics, and others in the community, so we can have a better idea of a community why. But this is a refreshing result, and we'll continue to follow this and report on it. And again, we hope to have a publicly available percent positive per week, so the community can monitor that and have an idea of how to assess risk going forward, again, particularly now that things are starting to open up. Next slide, please.
These slides, by the way, were emailed to all the offices at 8:45.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an update of our nursing home, long-term care, and institutional clusters. As you can see, we've grown by two facilities. Those are located at the bottom and identified as M and O. And again, these are not all nursing homes. There are state facilities on this list. There are shelters on this list. But a significant number of these are nursing homes or assisted living facilities. You can see that in these clusters, we have a total of 103 staff which have been identified as COVID-positive. 232 residents are positive, for a total of 335. That's an increase of 46 from last week. In relation to our nursing home task force, they are continuing to work on this issue. We have deployed strike teams to most of these facilities already. Some of those facilities received large strike teams, and that was done in cooperation with the state. We were notified on Friday that those state assets that were deployed will be limited to 10 days. And so we are going to have to take over contracts for those facilities who still need to have those personnel continue beyond that 10-day limit. To other facilities, we've deployed smaller groups, because they don't have the same staffing impact as some of the harder-hit facilities. So in those circumstances, we send out two or three individuals to evaluate the situation. They've been focused on doing a needs assessment, identifying and training individuals in PPE use, identifying PPE needs, as well as a testing strategy for residents and staff. So that will continue. We will continue to send out small teams early on in outbreaks so that we can assess the situation, make determination of needs, and then fill in additional staff if that's identified as a need. Next slide, please. Again, this is a slide regarding our public enrollment process. We have been able to enroll many, many more people than through our previous platform that required a physician evaluation and referral. So we're very pleased with that. It's critical that people, the same day they develop symptoms, to get on this website, to fill out a survey, and to schedule to get tested. Right now, we are testing anybody with symptoms. So if they have any of the COVID-19 symptoms identified by the CDC, which is the fever, the cough, the shortness of breath, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, we've also included. If they have a sore throat, if they have a change in their taste or smell, if they have chills, if they have muscle aches, they're going to get tested. They're going to get offered a test. So we want folks to sign up as quickly as possible and to not take chances. We know that this is an elusive disease, and it presents like many other things present. I've just showed you that 98% of those who have these symptoms don't have COVID-19. But it's critical that we identify the folks that do have it, so that we can isolate them. We can provide them the resources they need, including connections to healthcare, connections to social services, so that we can isolate the right people, contain the outbreak, and continue our businesses in our economy going, but doing so in a safe manner. Next slide, please. So we've been working with, also been working with the Austin Chamber in their efforts at identifying a plan to reopen businesses safely. Part of that has been to remind the community regarding the essential things that work. That's the social distancing, that's the public masking, that's these personal hygiene messages. That's cocooning those who are at risk or complications. So as we go forward, as we consider further reopenings and how to do so safely, it is really going to be dependent upon hearing those messages over and over again to ensure that as we allow the community to breathe a little bit, that we do so safely. We can't lose track of these messages. We have to have these signs. We have to have a hand sanitizer. We have to reinforce the hand washing. We have to continue to require facial coverings and in that social distancing piece in order to avoid further shutdowns. Next slide, please. Again, all these resources are available on our COVID-19 website. The scheduling for testing is available on that website. Updated information for businesses and homes and communities are available on that website. So continue to want to encourage folks to go to that site, go to trusted resources for information on COVID-19 and how to get through this together. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Esq., and I think we're going to pivot now directly to Director Hayden. I believe she's on the line. Director Hayden?
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm just going to just provide just a few high-level updates. Our epidemiologists and the surveillance staff are continuing with our case investigations, including our cluster investigations. As we anticipate the gradual reopening that started on May 1st, our staff are just really, just kind of ramping up a little more in anticipation of an increase of cases. We are continuing to interview people that are COVID-positive and gathering a little additional more information from them based on the requirement from the state of Texas. Our social services branch, our staff, continue to work across with several providers, including ensuring that interpretive services are being provided when folks are going in for testing, making sure we are ADA compliant and ensuring the safety and security of folks as they're coming through. We are working with the PA on a suicide prevention needs and survey through the mayor's office. In addition to that, we are also working on various provisions for transportation. Our food access continues to provide shelf-stable foods at the convention center. And with our homelessness, we have three prologues that are currently operational. And we are working very closely throughout the community to ensure testing is happening for our homeless population. With our faith-based group, we are adding some additional marketing strategies to ensure that we are providing information to African-Americans as well as Hispanic and Latino populations. And as we refine those efforts, we are going to be doing some additional efforts in those spaces. Our childcare task force has started to look at and have conversations about recommendations as well as concerns about summer camps. And so they have started those conversations to do some increased planning. We are also working very closely with our Joint Information Center and our PIO to address, to make sure we have appropriate language on our flyers, as well as ensuring that our information is culturally and linguistically appropriate. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Hayden. And as I mentioned, we'll hear from Assistant City Manager Chris Shorter and our consultant Matthew Doherty to do a little bit more specific detail on the efforts around homelessness within this COVID environment. So with that, ACM, Shorter?
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Oh, perfect. Well, good morning, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, and of course, city manager. And thank you for the opportunity to provide updates on our homeless response to COVID-19, as well as our longer-term system improvement planning. I am joined, as Manager Crunk mentioned at the top of the meeting this morning, by Matthew Doherty, former executive director of the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness, and part of the consulting team working with our staff and with community providers and partners to reduce unsheltered homelessness and alleviate the negative impacts of homelessness and housing instability. This morning, we wanted to give a quick update on our efforts to provide immediate support to our neighbors experiencing homelessness in response to COVID-19, as well as our longer-term and ongoing strategic planning efforts. As you all know, during an initial site visit to Austin, March 3rd through 5th, the consultant team, including Bar Poppy and Matt Doherty, as well as Matthew, I'm sorry, Matt White, as well as Matthew Doherty, conducted a series of public forums with city staff, community stakeholders, service providers, and people experiencing homelessness. They also visited several facilities and programs serving our homeless neighbors. Very soon after that site visit, in fact, I believe March 6th, we canceled South by Southwest the very next day after they left. The city turned its attention to responding to COVID-19, and our consultant team has provided critical support and daily guidance really throughout this process. Matthew Doherty will discuss the overarching response to the intersecting crisis of COVID-19 and homelessness, recognizing that addressing the needs and protecting the health of people experiencing homelessness during this pandemic is a critical strategy for reducing infections and illness and reducing the demands on our scarce healthcare resources. In addition to Matthew's short presentation, I would also like to point you to the April Homeless Services Update Memorandum to Mayor and Council with the really latest information on our ongoing work around facilities for isolation and protective lodging, which Stephanie just highlighted, food access, hygiene resources, the very comprehensive work and services being provided by our downtown Austin Community Court, as well as the Homeless Outreach Street Team and EMS, Community Health Paramedics. In terms of our process to reengage council around our longer-term system planning efforts, we have worked with your respective offices, and I really appreciate you all setting aside 90 minutes next week on May 13th and 14th to do facilitated working sessions with the entire consultant team to get your feedback on some of their preliminary findings. Separate from the longer-term planning, this afternoon, we are scheduled to attend a Social Services Cabinet meeting at 3:00 PM to provide more detailed overview of the more immediate work in short-term response during COVID-19. And with that, if I can, I would like to ask Matt Doherty to chime in for remarks.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much, Chris. So I just wanted to provide a quick overview of some of the work that's been happening collaboratively between the city and its nonprofit and faith-based community partners to try to be an important element of the public health response to COVID-19 by addressing the healthcare and housing needs of people experiencing homelessness during the pandemic. The key organizing document for the work that's happening to address homelessness is what we've called the COVID-19 Homelessness Response Plan, which the consultants helped to develop collaboratively between the city of Austin and the Ending Community Homelessness Coalition, ECO, to really capture the full range of strategies that needed to be implemented to address the needs of people experiencing homelessness, again, as a part of the overall community response to COVID-19. That plan was developed with the support of the city-funded consultants, myself included, and HUD has also been providing a consultant, Julie McFarland, who's been critical to this process as well. The plan was definitely intended to be an iterative plan and adaptable as conditions changed on the ground. The plan has five key objectives, and work is underway under each of these objectives, and they all really do intersect and support one another. Early focus was on deploying comprehensive screening processes for both sheltered and unsheltered people, to identify people who were symptomatic, to identify people who were in high-risk categories, and to try to link people to other settings, which is the second objective, was to secure and operate sites and rooms to provide alternate living arrangements for people experiencing homelessness, including integrated in with other people who needed similar kinds of protection. That includes the isolation facility and the prologues that were mentioned earlier. The third objective focuses on implementing purposeful efforts to transition people and help people exit from those alternative living arrangements, really with the commitment of all the partners to try to prevent anyone from being discharged back into unsheltered homelessness especially, but to try to use this as an opportunity to connect people to the housing solutions that they need and their homelessness. And that working group focused on those efforts is also beginning to transition to a focus on the strategies for preventing entries into homelessness as we enter the economic recovery phase of this process and to scale up rehousing strategies during that economic recovery period. The fourth objective focuses on supporting people in emergency shelter and supporting shelters to provide safer environments, as safe as we can environments within crowded settings. And the fifth objective focuses on providing similar support to people who are unsheltered, including access to hygiene and facilities and safety equipment. So comprehensively, those five objectives comprehensively try to address the full range of strategies and activities that are needed, which is a pretty ambitious range of activities. of strategies and activities that were needed, which is a pretty ambitious range of activities. And quickly found that we needed to create some structures to help implement that plan. And I'm going to be pretty quick on this part, but we put together between the city and ECO teams to really drive forward the implementation of this plan and to take lead responsibility for specific elements of the plan. Overall, the implementation is overseen by a project management team, making sure that we're moving forward on all elements of the plan, again, co-led by the city and by ECO, and identifying areas of priorities, removing obstacles for some of the implementation teams, making key decisions together to support the work of the implementation teams. There currently are four implementation teams that are in place and active right now. One team focuses on the hotel-motel strategy and the implementation of those facilities, addressing both logistical and operational needs, but also addressing services needs. One of the key challenges that that team has been able to address is to make sure there's adequate behavioral healthcare services for people who are staying at the pro lodges, many of whom are coming in with behavioral healthcare needs. Another team focuses specifically on the emergency shelter and the unsheltered elements of the strategy. That team right now is especially focused on assessing the level of safety that's being provided within the emergency shelter settings, the occupancy that's possible while operating safely, so that we can better understand what kind of shelter capacity is available in the community while operating with safety principles in place. Two more recent teams have been formed just within the last week or so to begin to move the work forward towards the next phase of this work. One team focuses on the rehousing strategies, prioritizing the rehousing needs of people who are staying within the pro lodges, but also looking at the prevention and diversion strategies that will be needed to be implemented during the recovery phase. And then that work is very closely supported by a team focused on funding strategies, looking at both existing and new resources, and identifying what are the opportunities to use those resources to support rehousing, prevention, diversion strategies moving forward. We may find over time that other teams are needed to be formed, but these four teams feel like they afford the core basis of being able to implement the response plan. And the final thing I want to highlight is that those teams do not work in isolation. There's a lot of communication with existing structures and teams and with the nonprofit and faith-based providers, that the work of those teams is being closely informed by the work of others in the community who are also responding to this pandemic, and then also trying to be accountable to sharing information with key stakeholders to report on the progress, challenges, next steps, and priorities for those teams. Thank you very much.
And with that, Mayor and Council, that concludes the Part 1 of our briefing. Again, Part 2 will focus on the economic resiliency and the budget planning, but for now, we'll pause and see if there are questions either for Dr. Esq., Director Hayden, ACM Shorter, or Matthew Doherty. I'll turn it back to you.
Hey, colleagues, any questions? Councilmember Rintariya?
Do any of y'all really have an update on when we're going to do public testing? And if that's going to be possible anytime in the future? Is it, do y'all know exactly how far out that might be?
Councilmember, I'll take that. So we're doing public testing now through that public enrollment process. I have been in discussions with University of Texas regarding what we call seroprevalence study. This is using a high-quality antibody test to assess prevalence throughout the community as well as in some subsections of the community as well. So I'm expecting a summary or proposal for that this week, and once I have that, then we will present that and discuss that with council.
Do you know how many, if it does happen here in a couple of weeks? And you know how many tests are available to the public if they're, once it becomes available?
So right now, we're aiming for 2,000 a week. We certainly want to have the capability of doing up to 2,000 a day. We don't really have a timeline yet on when those resources may be available to that scale. I'll tell you that we have been focusing on getting nursing homes tested, both staff and residents, but we don't have enough testing availability in the community, for instance, right now to test everybody who's admitted to a hospital. So there are still some barriers in testing. We are working with the testing companies to increase capacity. Our innovations team is working with stakeholders and partners to 3D-print test slabs. So we hope that situation will continue to improve, but again, we are not where we need to be to offer significant increases in scale at this stage.
Well, thank you for what you're doing. You know, I know this is a very stressful time, especially for you, being out there on the front line, so I really want to thank you.
Dr. Esq., to clarify the answers, 2,000 tests a week, is that APH tests or is that citywide testing?
That's, thank you, Mayor, that's APH testing. So again, we've got community care who's doing testing, some of the test kits which we are providing to them, we've got the medical school doing testing, we've got Austin Regional Clinic doing a lot of testing. There's testing happening in hospitals as well and throughout the community. That 2,000 a week is just the APH testing.
So altogether, we probably have about 1,000 tests or reaching that a day in the city and trying to get to 2,000 tests a day overall in the city?
Yes, sir, I believe that's a reasonable estimate at this stage.
Okay, thank you. And PO, anybody in the city that has any measure of symptom can sign up right now to get a test. The problem with testing people who don't have symptoms is right now, 98% of those people would get a negative test perhaps, but they could be infected tomorrow. So there's just, we're trying to figure out what the best investment of time and dollars is. Continuing on with questions, Mr. Flanagan?
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, PO, for that question, because I think that was on all of our minds, certainly was on mine. On the nursing care, the nursing home, the long-term care facilities, that's clearly a pretty significant portion of cases overall. Depending on when and how you do the math, it's 20%, ish of all cases. Are there other pockets of positive cases that help add up to the 1,800 that I'm seeing on the dashboard? I mean, who are the people that are being infected?
So right now, we seem to see clusters around people who are working right now. That includes healthcare workers, that includes construction workers, that includes people working in grocery stores. The data set that receives them from the hospitals, we are merging in information from our EpiLine list, which is our record at APH, so we can include information like occupations so that we can follow those over time and get a better assessment of where those occupations are happening. We are working to do some targeted testing at construction sites as well, because we know that's a hotspot right now. And we will continue to follow those trends and try to do focused testing in those areas where we see those clusters happening, those industries where we see those clusters happening. And this was a critical element of the discussion with the Austin Chamber. As more businesses look to open, we've got to be very clear that we have to not only protect the workforce through requirements of workers and customers, but we have to make sure that they know what to do if they develop symptoms. They know how to connect into, to get the public free testing, they know how to connect to healthcare, and they have the capability of being responsible, of being able to call in sick and to be paid for that time off, so that they're not disincentives to keep people who are not well from having to go to work.
So it's, I mean, I think we all know this on the council, but it's for the public, you know, the struggles of reopening businesses is not about whether or not someone who is patroning that business is at risk, it is really about the fact that you need employees in the business, and those are the ones at risk. The folks, the protesters that are holding up signs saying, "I need a haircut," it's not about whether or not you get sick from getting a haircut, it's about your barber or your, the folks working in the salon that get infected. And that, I think, really does fall on the business owners as they make their decisions about how they're going to survive and what programs we can create to ensure that they do survive. So that'll be more in the economic part of the conversation.
Next question, Alex, Councilmember Kitchen?
Thank you all for this information, it's very helpful. I'll just have a few questions for Dr. Esq. So with regard to the nursing facilities, can you help me understand the status of testing in the nursing facilities? Of course, let me say, I really appreciate sharing the information that you have by facility, that's very helpful. And thank you for what you said with regard to strike teams, but I'd like to drill down just a bit deeper. Can you tell me specifically how many of those, the status of testing, and then perhaps you can provide us some information after this about which one of those listed facilities we've deployed strike teams to? So to sum up, my data question is, if you would provide to us, and you can provide that to us later, each one of those facilities that you have identified, just give us a check mark of which ones actually have a strike team deployed? And then lastly, can you give, can you help me understand the status of testing, particularly of workers and residents in these facilities that have clusters?
So we have, we have three full strike teams deployed to three of these facilities, and those are the ones that have been most impacted by both residents and staff who have become ill. The other facilities, except for one of the new ones, have also had the smaller teams deployed, at least those who are nursing homes and those where we have jurisdiction. So again, we've got some state facilities where the state has jurisdiction on this list. We have at least one shelter on this list where the situation has been resolved at that shelter. So the ones that still are active have had teams deploy to those facilities. In relation to the testing of staff and residents, so we're in the process, continue to be in the process of getting testing for all of the residents and staff at those facilities. My understanding is, as of this morning, we tested 500. The teams are continuing to both test people and to train the staff how to collect tests. So we have several facilities where there are plenty of staff there, the staff has not been significantly impacted, and they are willing to do the test collections themselves internally and then provide those results to Austin Public Health. So the nursing home task force is building out those processes to ensure that we can test all of the residents and all of the staff at all of those nursing homes that are on the list.
Okay, last, thank you very much, I really appreciate all the work you guys are doing. Can you tell me if we've finished testing workers at any of these facilities?
We have completed testing at at least one or two of the facilities.
Okay, are the workers or just the workers and residents?
Workers and residents.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else before we get to the finance part of this? Yes, Councilmember Tobo and Councilmember Kassar?
Thank you. My first question is, I've got a few, my first question is for Dr. Esq. Dr. Esq., in the numbers that you gave us, and I just closed them so I don't have them in front of me, but there was quite a gap between those who were completing the survey online for online registration for testing. There was a gap between those who were completing it and those who were actually being tested. Can you remind us of what that gap is?
Sure, Councilmember, so we have a lot of folks who log in to see what's going on, see what it's like, that aren't experiencing symptoms. We have some folks who log into the site multiple times. So everybody, everybody who has any of the symptoms is offered a test. Anybody who has unprotected, close contact with a COVID-19 patient is offered a test. So I think we're really getting to all those folks who need to be tested. You know, again, we don't have the capacity yet to offer widespread asymptomatic testing unless there's a risk factor associated with that. For instance, we are going to offer testing, asymptomatic testing through the public site for nursing home workers. We offer some asymptomatic testing for family members of nursing home workers so that we can try to better cocoon those facilities who really are at high risk and have demonstrated that risk throughout this pandemic process. Certainly is.
So that was a subsequent to my question, how, because it seems to me that there are hundreds, hundreds of people who are doing the registration but not actually getting tested, and so you've answered my question, that individuals with any of the symptoms, they don't need to have a combination of symptoms necessarily, but if they have any symptoms and they're logging in through that site, they will be offered a test?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Dr. Esq. Can you, and one more question for you, thank you for the response to my colleague about the different, sort of the general, some general trends that you're seeing among those who are testing positive. Do you have a sense of that group? And I know you said you're going to collect more additional information through the surveying, but do you have a sense of those who are positive at the moment? Do you have a sense of how much, what the percentage is of that group who are working on construction sites versus other professions? Or how it breaks down, construction versus healthcare versus groceries?
I don't have those numbers today. Again, we're hopeful that we can integrate that data so that we can provide some weekly snapshots of what that breakdown looks like. I think that's certainly important for us as we go forward, as things start to reopen, but we have seen a significant number of construction workers as well as family members of construction workers who are in that positive group right now.
I think that'll be helpful. Do you have a sense, a sense of whether that's the dominant industry within that?
It certainly seems to be at least one of the dominant industries. Again, the people who are getting sick right now are generally people who are working right now. And again, as we've discussed, that risk is going to increase the more people who are working. As Councilmember Flanagan pointed out, at the heart of risk is that person-to-person interaction. The more person-to-person interactions you have, particularly in an unprotected fashion, particularly within six feet of one another, the higher the risk of getting this illness is going to be. And this is why those same messages are so critically important now, even as things begin to open.
Okay, Councilmember Kassar?
I have two questions. First, Dr. Esq., at this stage, you know, in prior stages, you had talked to us about what some of the roadblocks were to more testing and, you know, what our responsibility and work was versus states and federal governments and private sectors. Where are we now as far as what it is that we are doing and is within our control on increasing testing and then what we need other actors to be doing?
So we're still continuing the dialogue with the state. You know, the challenge with the state is, the state serves as the local health department for a significant portion of the state. So in most jurisdictions, the state is the only entity that's looking after public health for that jurisdiction. So in jurisdictions like ours, in other major metropolitan counties, a lot of those responsibilities fall upon local government to handle. But we are continuing that dialogue. In fact, we've had a request this morning for additional needs from the state. So the state has been supportive, but, you know, we are taking on the vast majority of the responsibility ourselves to identify avenues for increasing capacity for testing, identifying equipment, both for for testing, identifying equipment, both for us and for our region, so that, you know, as, as the situation continues to evolve, we, we can be a bit more self-sufficient as we make our plans and, and implement our strategies.
And so at this point, it, it's largely fallen upon us to get from that 1,000 a day to 2,000 a day. And it's, and it sounds like it's not a resource, necessarily a resource or budget issue, but more of a supply chain issue that we keep, we're continuing to run into, we're trying to figure out how to get around. Is that right?
That's correct. And that's true for testing, it's also true for, for PPE. We're, we're still not in a situation where we have substantial stockpiles of, of PPE. And that remains a concern for us, particularly as we try to be more aggressive in providing protection for our nursing homes. PPE shortages are still an issue.
And then the last thing I'll, I'll mention is, you know, we're still having conversations and working on as, especially as I hear from constituents, some of them in retail sectors, that they may have an underlying condition or have someone at home with an underlying condition, but they don't want to go to work, but they don't know what to do in that situation, or they don't know if their underlying condition is one of the ones that puts them most at risk. I think the more you can develop for us information that we can get out to people, so that we can start figuring out how to, how to keep, know who to keep, who we need to cocoon and start coming up with strategies on how to best cocoon them, that would be really helpful because I'm hearing from folks that don't know if their underlying condition is one of the ones at risk, or if they qualify for unemployment, or if they should tell their boss, no, they're staying home or not. So I think that information is becoming more and more urgent as more things open up.
Thank you, Councilmember. I, I, I think those elements will continue to be included in, in future orders that, that will come. They, they certainly have been in the orders that the mayor, the judge have issued up to this stage. And I think that is critical, you know, our, our success, as we talked about yesterday, our success is going to be partly dependent upon our ability to cocoon those at risk. And that means that, that those folks at risk need to continue to telecommute, need to continue to protect themselves. And, and our, our businesses, our local and, and state and federal government need to find creative ways to, to support that effort.
Okay, Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate all the work you're doing, Dr. Eschott. I know this is going on quite a while, and I really appreciate how much effort it's taking on everyone's behalf. Can you tell me a little bit about whether or not this virus is mutating? I had heard at one point it was not mutating quickly, but I just was curious to know if there's any change on that front.
So there, there does seem to be some minor mutations that are happening. You know, again, we don't have any indication of, of any substantial changes, but that's something that continues to be tracked by the CDC as well as the WHO. And, you know, some of that involves detailed assessments of, of individuals as we identify clusters and, and track those. But there, there hasn't been any, any substantial mutations that, that I'm aware of that would indicate a, a, a change in strategy at this stage.
Okay, so does it seem like there's a low likelihood of, if someone has recovered, their chances of getting it again are pretty low at this point in time?
Well, you know, the jury's still at a bit on, on immunity and how long that lasts. You know, I think most experts believe that, that there's at least partial and temper, temporary immunity, but that is an issue that we'll continue to track. With any disease, individuals are going to have some variability in their immunity, and part of that's based upon their own body's immune response to the initial disease. If they don't mount a significant immune response, they're not going to build the antibodies to protect from future infections. But, but that work is still being done, those studies are still being done, and we'll certainly be paying close attention to, to what that looks like. We have seen in some jurisdictions that, you know, around 2% to 3% of individuals have retested positive. I think we can expect for some reinfections to happen. And again, part of the, the WHO and, and CDC's recommendation is, is to not use a, a positive IgG antibody as indication that that person is safe from future infection, but they may be safer than others.
Okay, that's helpful. And can you tell me a bit about the, the testing and whether or not different forms like saliva testing would become available soon? Or is, can you tell me a little bit more about those different testing styles?
So there is at least one saliva test which has been approved by the FDA. We're expecting to see an increase in, in saliva testing. There's some other innovations that are happening as well. We see that, you know, that, that, that some labs are doing batch testing, which basically means in a circumstance where, you know, we, we have relatively low incidence of disease, like in the, the sample I showed you. If you test 100 people and, and only two of them are positive, we can batch, you know, you batch 50 together and 50 together. If you run a test on the 50 that are negative, you run one test of 50 people and you exclude them, you run the other test and you find there's a positive, now you only have to run half those tests individually. So there is some innovation that's happening to increase the efficiency of testing. There's been some suggestions of, of batch saliva testing, which may be quicker to, to turn around results. So I think there's a lot of innovation that is continuing to happen. I think we'll also see a substantial change in improvement in point-of-care testing that doesn't require an analyzer to run, so similar to like a, a flu test, where you can go to a clinic or a, a pharmacy and be able to get relatively instant results. I think once we have that kind of capacity to test that doesn't require send off every time, it's going to improve our ability to, to maneuver amongst this disease and, and still be safe.
Okay, that's helpful. And can you tell me about the communication process for people who might be able to donate platelets or plasma? Is that something that the online portal can tell people where to go and how to help if they have been found to have the antibodies?
So if individuals are COVID-19 positive, they've recovered, they can connect directly with We Are Blood and, and sign up for plasma donation. Part of our new platform, that Salesforce platform, will be part of that process. So once, once we have an indication they've recovered, it will give them an email saying, if you're interested in donating plasma, here's the link to do that. You know, part of the reason why our recovery numbers are, are lower by percentage than other jurisdictions are we're still calling those individuals, contacting those individuals to confirm recovery with the intention of introducing them to the plasma donation piece. Once we automate that, it will be more efficient so that we can ensure that, that folks who are, are able to and willing to donate plasma have the opportunity to do that. In discussion with Marshall Cofrin, who's the, the CEO at, at We Are Blood, we have, we have a, a surplus of, of plasma, Comalas and Plazma now, allowing them to bank some of that for future needs. You know, Austin has, has, has come together, have recovered, are, are doing a great job at donating. You know, at some stage, we may have the potential to, to send plasma outside of the jurisdiction if we have enough surplus. So I think that's a great opportunity for folks to, to, to really help those individuals who are most critically ill, and I'm, I'm very pleased with, with how Austin's doing in response.
That's great to hear. Those were all my questions. Thank you.
Other questions, colleagues? Councilmember Alter.
Thank you. Good morning. Dr. Eschott, I had a couple of questions about how the testing's playing out if you go to a doctor's office instead of the APH. So if you were to go to a doctor's office, are they able to do testing just based on a single symptom and is that the protocol? Or do they have so few tests that they are having to conserve those? Can you just tell us a little bit more about how those protocols are changing and, and what would happen if you went to the doctor's office rather than going directly to APH?
So we've encouraged, we've sent out messaging to the, the medical society to encourage physicians to, to link their, their patients to the, the public testing. Having said that, clinics and physicians' offices may have direct access to testing, so they could order that through Quest or LabCorp or one of the other large laboratory systems. So there's going to be some variability in, in that process. Again, the APH process is free, they don't receive a bill. If, if they go through a physician's office in, in a private lab, there may be some bill associated with that. But, you know, there's, we're going to continue to see increases in testing availability at doctor's offices. So that's going to be the send off, some of that's going to be the, the rapid testing. So again, I think if, if folks want to go see their physician, they can do that. It's important still to call ahead, let them know that, that, that you're concerned about COVID-19, and, and their, the physician's office should be able to tell them if they have the capacity to test or not.
Thank you. And now that we've stand up, stood up the facilities at these various hotels for isolation and quarantine, can you tell us how many people are in those facilities and how does one actually take advantage of those opportunities should they need them?
I don't have the numbers. If Stephanie's still on, I'll, I'll turn to her for that. We are offering a isolation facility for everybody who tests positive, for, for those individuals who are exposed and, and don't have the ability to isolate at, at home safely. They're all offered a spot there, and we certainly want to encourage folks, if they have symptoms, if they test positive in particular, to utilize that, that free resource, that hotel, to, to help prevent spreading in the household. One of our, our issues that we're having right now, particularly in our East Side Crescent, is that, you know, we have lots of folks, sometimes multi-generations of, of individuals living in, in one home, and the more congested the home is, the more likely that household transmission is to happen. So i- in those circumstances in particular, we really, really do want to encourage folks to utilize that free resource, to separate themselves from their family, to help protect their family from getting infection.
So if somebody felt like they needed that, and, I mean, are they just getting that when they get their positive test? Or how, how are they, are they actually getting connected once we know they're positive?
So when they, when our team makes the first call of notification, then, then they are offered that, that facility. So there's some other mechanisms, sometimes referrals will come in through EMS, sometimes the referrals will come in from, from hospitals or, or physicians' offices. But the, the, the threshold for offering a spot at, at that facility is very, very low. So certainly if, if folks want a spot, there is a spot. If we fill up a facility, we, we have other facilities that, that we can add. There really should not be a barrier to folks who want to take advantage of that isolation facility. It's, it's a comfortable spot. It's a hotel room, there's a TV, there's Wi-Fi, there's food. It's, it is really a nice, nice place to recover and do so safely.
Great, thank you. Lastly, I've been hearing from more people, particularly about young people who are speculating about whether they had COVID back in, say, February or, or earlier. Can you speak to when we think the first cases came to Austin? And also, you know, how best to respond to folks who are speculating about having it in, you know, periods earlier in the year and, and, and what we might make of, of those comments? Obviously with only 2% of our APH tests being positive and lots of other illnesses being out there, the chances are still very low. But I'm struggling with a little bit of, of how to respond when, when asked questions in that regard.
So, you know, is, is it possible somebody may have had it in, in February or January? Yes, it's possible. We've seen a, a case in, in France that I saw in the news this morning that may have happened back in December. So it's possible. But remember that, that still, the vast majority of people who have COVID-19 symptoms don't have it. You know, probably the highest level that we had here as far, far as broad-based testing was about 12%. So there are lots of things that look like COVID-19. I listed a long list of symptoms. It, it's really hard to tell. The challenge that we have at this stage is, is a lot of people want to go out and do the antibody testing. And when the prevalence of disease is so low, a- as it is here, we estimate, you know, 1% or less, that the risk of having false positives is very high. So even the FDA-approved tests in a prevalence of 1%, five out of six positive results are going to be false positives. So that's why we want to encourage folks to, to really be wise when, when, and, and do their homework when they're doing antibody testing. At this stage, they're probably not sensitive and specific enough to tell us much, particularly as it relates to positive tests.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Tovo.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question that I, I think I had turned my mic off when I was asking Dr. Eschott, and then I have a couple of questions for, for Director Hayden. Dr. Eschott, we were talking about, we were talking about the professions where you're seeing cases come from, and, and one of them was construction. And we've certainly received in my office concerns about things that individuals are seeing out on construction sites in terms of a lack of social distancing, a lack of masks. I've witnessed some of that myself. I know that public health is doing a good job of, of trying to get the word out. Are you involved in trying to get messages out through some of our, our trade unions and through other means? I'm wondering what you're seeing in terms of compliance with, with those health and safety protocol? And, and what means you're using to try to get that message out to a broader, a broader array of construction sites and companies?
So we've been in discussions with them for, for weeks now, and that includes some of the, you know, the, the major contractors, the home builders, as well as representatives from labor, to really have a, a coordinated way to, to approach this issue. We have had ongoing outreach from, from the construction industry regarding testing and, and evaluations. The challenge that we have is that there's so much variability within the construction industry. You know, some of the larger projects have a lot better control over, over the employees and have a lot of structure built around doing so safely, whereas some of the smaller projects where you may have two or three people interacting at a time, may be a bit more challenging. But we continue to, to work to engage construction. We, we want to en- ensure that they are, are doing the screenings, doing those screenings well, and we continue to provide advice to them on, on how to do that well. Having said that, we've, we've known all along that enforcement of, of these standards is going to be very difficult for us. But, you know, I, I believe the construction industry and the workers themselves understand the importance to, not only the health and safety of, of the workers, but also to the continuity of operations that is really critically important to keep people safe, to keep that, that construction project underway. Obviously, if, if a significant portion of the workers become ill, they're not going to be able to work for at least a two-week period, and, and that's going to impact their ability to continue the project. So we're, we're continually looking for opportunities to engage those groups from both ends and hopeful that, that we can continue to enhance those efforts.
Okay, thank you. It sounds, yeah, and I've heard, I've heard concerns about both, both size projects, both smaller ones as well as larger ones. And so you've answered the question about whether or not you're working with labor and, and through some other means.
Councilmember Tovo, one of the priorities for Dell Medical right now is to do a pilot instruction test aimed at getting data from a construction site in that industry to be able to report back.
That sounds important. And I would, I would add, if, if Home Builders Association are not in the mix of people with whom you're talking, that they would be an important organization because they have a lot of those smaller, might have members who are working on those smaller projects. I'm kind of keeping an eye on one in my neighborhood that I don't, I'm not sure I've seen. I'm kind of keeping an eye on one in my neighborhood that I don't, I'm not sure I've seen any masks on. If, if, if so, they seem to come off pretty quickly. A couple of questions for Dr. Hayden, real short ones. I know my colleague, Councilmember Alter, asked the question about the capacity at this point at our quarantine facility, and I, I wanted to offer her an opportunity to answer that question. But I'm also interested to know whether we have capacity remaining at any of the three pro lodges that we have. And if, if you could speak, Director Hayden, to where they are in terms of capacity, but also if you have a sense in those pro lodges, the percent of, of individuals who are there who are experiencing homelessness.
Um, with the, with the isolation facility, according to the data that I've recently reviewed, there is about 80 people that were there. We have upwards to capacity for a little over 200. And so, and with the, with the pro lodges, I will say that all three of them are at capacity. They are full. And they are full with our, our people that are experiencing homelessness. So at this point, we, we have no capacity in those protective lodges. But I will say that the Salvation Army is, we've worked with them, they've got everything cleared up, and they are, they have opened their doors up today, starting today with the downtown location.
I see. So some of the individuals who are in those protective lodges, one, two, or three, will be able to move back to the Salvation Army, so that'll free up some capacity.
Well, I, I will say that our staff are going to, are working with them on various exit strategies. So some of them may go back to the Salvation Army, some of them may stay where they are and we'll just case manage them to a longer-term facility, something more permanent. So we're working with them in various ways.
And I look forward, in today's Social Service Cabinet, I look forward to, to talking more about those permanent strategies and, and really how the investments we're making right now could, could be part of that longer-term, longer-term work to find permanent housing for individuals experiencing homelessness. I'll leave my questions on that front for later. And then my last question is, you talked about the different teams with, with regard to this work, and I missed, and you probably said it, but I missed the kinds of people who are serving on those teams. Are those city staff primarily, or are they also community partners, or are they a mix?
It, it is a mix. So city, county, as well as nonprofit, community organizations, even, you know, community advocates are there, organizers. So it's just a blend of people that are, that are serving on the different, in the different work groups.
Thank you. Is it possible to, to see who's, who, who is serving, which organizations are represented on those work groups?
I'm, I'm sorry, to be clear, are we referring to the implementation teams that Matthew Doherty referenced, or is this a different work group, set of work groups? This is Chris Shorter, by the way.
Hey, Sam Shorter, I was talking about the teams that were referenced earlier, and I believe it was Matthew Doherty who talked about them, the different teams looking at, looking at different elements, permanent housing versus some of the other responses.
All right. So the action plan that Matthew Doherty referenced, and I'm not sure if he's still on the line, in the, the team of leaders focused on leading the implementation is primarily echo leadership and city, city leadership. And so we are also that team of staff. We are working to make sure that our providers are made and kept aware of the progress being made around those various implementation teams generally, but that we have focused membership and composition around echo and, and the city.
Okay, then, then it, then it is, then that is not the set of teams that I'm referring to. The set of teams I'm talking about are the ones that Director Hayden is describing that have a mix of community members. But again, I, I'll have an opportunity in the Social Service Cabinet to drill down, but it would be useful to see what organizations are represented on, on those different teams that are, are working to respond to the current, current situation.
Thank you.
I will make sure that when you have the meeting this afternoon with Adrienne Stirrup, Assistant Director, that she can at least give you a high level of, of who those organizations are that are working across the Social Services branch.
Thank you, Dr. Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kitchen.
Uh, this is a question for Dr. Esq. Just wanted to understand a little bit better on, one of the things that has been identified, you know, in the news across the country, and that has to do with retesting. And the, the, I wanted to understand your thoughts related to retesting and the importance of that. You know, repeat, I guess what I'm talking about is repeat testing and, you know, testing the same people more than once. Do you, can you speak to the importance of that and what you see us working towards as a community in that regard?
So Councilmember, we're, you know, we, we don't have the capacity right now to uniformly retest people. So generally, we are using the clinical guidance from CDC on the clearance process. Now, that's been updated recently to say at least 10 days since the onset of illness, as well as at least three days past the resolution of fever or improvement of, of the respiratory symptoms. We know that the state is using a, a calculation to determine that rather than, you know, calling individuals and confirming that's the case. But we may consider retesting in, in some individuals, such as healthcare workers, nursing home workers, to ensure that they are, are cleared before going back to work. But as, as a general strategy for the population, I don't expect that we're going to have the capability of doing that anytime soon.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Esq. Do you think that that's something that we need to be working towards at some point or as soon as we can?
Uh, I, I don't know that that's the case. You know, the CDC seems quite competent in the clinical clearance process. And, you know, it's certainly something we can, we can look at and discuss, but so far it's, it's been relatively reliable. It has, has been changing as the evidence has changed. But, you know, I, I think that, that it's, it's unlikely that we're going to be in a position to, to be able to do that uniformly.
Thank you.
You're on me, Mayor.
Sorry, joined. Can you all hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, sorry. Anybody have anything before we go to the funding budgeting report? It will go there. I do want to point out that Councilmember Kassar joined us just as the initial presentation was actually beginning, and it was Councilmember Kassar's birthday yesterday. But, but keeping in line with our, our virtual rules, we're not going to sing happy birthday for fear that somebody could actually pull out a single voice. So we do wish you a happy birthday yesterday.
Thank you.
Manager, you want to lead us off on the economic recovery? Councilmember Harbor-Madison, do you want to go?
Actually, yeah, I had one last question before, before Dr. Esq. and Director Hayden take off. It was about, I've gotten a couple of concerns about Dell Medical Schools sending out a call for volunteers for contact tracing. I think the concern is that it seems like a pretty hefty lift, what they're asking from volunteers is 24 hours a week of volunteer effort for four weeks in order to conduct the contact tracing. So just wanted to daylight that that's a concern that's been expressed to me, that the fear is that that's not a sustainable way to conduct the, the tracing.
I'll make sure that gets passed on to Dell as well.
Thank you.
Uh, Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. So now we're going to pivot to the portion of this briefing that really relates to our budgeting and then the economic recovery, and that'll be done in two portions. The first will be led by our Deputy CFO, Ed Banino, who has a few slides, and he'll be joined by some staff that will help complement the presentation. And then we'll move to our Director of Economic Development, Veronica Bruseno, and she will be kicking off a group that is really excited to talk to you, and that's the panel of experts that she's compiled, and that will be the second part of this. We'll wait for that entire briefing to happen, and then we'll turn back to Council for questions for either Ed Banino, we have Bree Franco as well on the phone, or the, the Economic Recovery Panel. So with that, I'm going to ask Ed Banino to, to kick us off.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Ed Banino, Deputy Chief Financial Officer for the City. It looks like the tech people are bringing up the next presentation. There is a lag between, I think, what's happening in the room and what's on your screen and what I'm seeing on the live stream, so if I'm ever not speaking to the right slide on the screen, please just speak up and, and let me know. Let me provide you with an outline for staff briefings. I, I'm going to start off this morning with a recap of the various federal, federal funding sources and eligible uses for those funding sources. You've seen this, some of this information before at the briefing I provided on April 7th and the briefing that Bree Franco provided on April 21st. So we're trying to summarize everything and update information for the most recent data that we have available to us. I'll start off talking first about the city of Austin funding, and then also provide a recap of resources that are available to other regional public entities. Following that, I will turn the mic over to Bree Franco to provide you an update on the Coronavirus Relief Fund, which is the largest source of federal funding that's available to the city of Austin, and Travis and Williamson Counties also have a share of that. We have some more clear guidelines from the Treasury Department now, so Bree Franco can speak to those. We'll then be joined by Juan Ortiz to talk about the eligible expenses that can be reimbursed from FEMA, which is another major source of federal funding that's available to us. And then we wanted to transition into speaking about a, a spending framework for our coronavirus response. We would view this framework as being something that we could then use to guide future funding decisions and, and heading towards a May 21st initial round of appropriations from these different funding sources in alignment with the spending framework. And so we'll be looking for Council's input on that framework. And then finally, as the manager mentioned, we will transition to a, to Veronica Bruseno to talk about our Economic Recovery Leadership Panel and, and the work that they've been doing. So with that intro, well, actually, let me just say before I dive into the various funding sources, I want you to keep in mind that what I'm highlighting is funding that's available to local public entities. It's not a complete recap of all the funding that's coming through the CARES Act. It's focused on funding that's coming into public agencies. So just keep in mind that there's a lot of other funding that's available to our local community and local businesses through the CARES Act, such as the Paycheck Protection Program, the payments to individual taxpayers, enhanced unemployment insurance benefits, nutrition assistance, and many other programs. But I'm just going to focus my con, comments in on those public dollars. Can we go on to the next slide? All right, so what, um... What you're looking at on this slide is a summary of CARES Act funding, the largest portion of, coming to the city of Austin, the largest portion being the Coronavirus Relief Fund at $170.8 million. I will mention that this is not a reimbursement style of, of funding such as FEMA. This is funding that's already been provided to the city. This cash is in our bank account and available to us to start using in our response to the coronavirus. It is broadly eligible for direct response to the emergencies such as medical, meeting medical and public health needs, but it also is allowable to use for second-order effects and to provide economic support to those who have been impacted by business or employment interruptions. And then another broad category, though, is payroll costs of staff that has substantially been dedicated to COVID-19 response. So oftentimes in disaster relief funding, it's only the additional cost, overtime cost that would be reimbursable, but this fund can be used to offset the, the payroll costs of, of these staff that are substantially dedicated to COVID-19 response. And we do have some additional clarity from the Treasury Department about what substantially dedicated means. There are some limitations in regards to this funding source, though. The costs must be incurred between March 1st and December 30th of 2020, so essentially between, over the course of the next eight months, we have to have $170 million out the door, or we'll have to return those funds to the Treasury Department. Also, supplanting is not allowed, budgeted, budgeted expenditures with the above exception that I talked about in regards to the, the payroll costs of staff substantially dedicated to COVID-19 response. And then finally, we can't use these funds for revenue replacement. The next one I want to talk about is our Community Development Block Grant. We received $4.6 million of additional funding from HUD. This can be used for public services such as rental assistance and childcare, job training and meals, economic development assistance, including grants or loans, as well as the acquisition and improvement of land or buildings for affordable housing. I would mention in regards to the public services, our CDBG funds traditionally have a 15% limit for public services, and under the CARES Act, that limit has been waived. In regards to our Emergency Solutions Grant, $2.4 million, which can be used for emergency shelter operations, purchasing hand sanitizers and masks for individuals experiencing homelessness, as well as case management, including the coordination of medical care for that population. We received a additional $415,000 from our Ryan White Grants, Parts A and C. This funding can be used for increased clinic operating hours, increased staff costs, including overtime, services to support social distancing, and things of that nature. Our HOPLO Grant, our housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, was increased by $272,000 for housing facility operations costs, costs associated with short-term hotel stays as needed to protect individuals experiencing AIDS, as well as access to food, medication, and medical care. The Vern JAG Grant is provided through the Justice Department. There is $885,000 that's available to the Austin Police Department to help with overtime costs related to crisis response, personal protective equipment, as well as law enforcement protective equipment needed to respond to the crisis, and additional training and travel expenses. This is really related to the distribution of resources to individuals in need. And then our airport received an airport grant of $58.7 million that has very broad eligibility of uses. It can be used for airport capital expenses, operating expenses, or debt service expenses. So that's a summary of what's available to Austin. If we could go on to the next slide, please. I think I fell one behind you, so actually, we should be on slide four now, which is a summary of the CARES Act funding available to other local agencies. At the top of the list, you can see Travis County, and a lot of these funding sources are the same as what I highlighted for the city of Austin with the same purposes, uses, and limitations. Travis County received $61 million for their allocation of the coronavirus. Travis County received sixty-one million dollars um, for their allocation of the Coronavirus Relief Fund, seven hundred thousand dollars in a CDBG grant, and a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars for Burn JAG. Williamson County, um, Coronavirus Relief Fund was ninety-three point three million dollars, um, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars of additional funds for their Community Development Block Grant Program, and a forty thousand dollar Burn JAG Grant. Um, Capital Metro, our local um, transit organization, received a hundred and four point one million dollar um, grant from the Federal Transit Administration. Um, and these funds, similar to the airport funds that are received by the city of Austin, can be utilized um, for operations and capital expenditures of uh, the transit system. Central Health, um, received three point seven million dollars for public health and emergency funds. Um, this funding can be used for healthcare-related expenses or loss revenues caused by the coronavirus. Um, and they also received additional funding for their community health centers. Um, and then finally, the People's Clinic, um, received one million dollars of public health emergency funding, uh, similar purpose to what the Central Health money, um, can be utilized for healthcare-related expenses um, for people impacted by the COVID nineteen virus, um, or illness, um, as well as seventy-nine thousand dollars for their community health centers. Finally, I just wanted to close out my comments. If we go on to the next slide, slide five. Um, that there are a number of additional grant funds available through the CARES Act. Um, and the city, various city departments are working on grant applications to tap into these funds. Um, but the National Endowments for the Arts and the National Endowment for the Humanities, uh, each have released a total of seventy-five million dollars of additional grant funding. Um, and uh, the city will be applying for a share of those grant monies. Uh, grants to libraries and museums has fifty million dollars um, available through the CARES Act. Our library department is pursuing those grants. Um, Department of Commerce, um, has one point five billion dollars available, um, due to Economic Development Administration Program. Assistance to firefight grants, um, is available through FEMA of a hundred million dollars. Um, and then we also have disaster relief funds and emergency management performance grants um, that are, that are available through FEMA. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Bree Franco, and if our IT folks could go to slide six of the presentation. And Bree's gonna talk to us more about the Coronavirus Relief Fund and the Treasury Department guidance in regards to uses of those funds.
Is Bree with us?
The a hundred and seventy.
Bree, would you start again?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Bree Franco, Intergovernmental Relations Officer. I'm gonna go over the Coronavirus Relief Fund, which is the guidelines we received from Treasury. The Coronavirus Relief Fund is the a hundred and seventy point eight million that we received directly from the Treasury Department. Um, after I last presented to you on April twenty-second, the next day, the Treasury released its guidance on the fund, um, along with a half-page FAQ. That guidance broke down the eligible expenses. Remember before this, all we had was the legislative language that said it had to be necessary expenses related to COVID nineteen. The guidance broke down those expenses into five categories before you. The first three largely apply to the city and how the city can be reimbursed for its expenses. It's broken them down into medical expenses and public health expenses, which are pretty explanatory. Most of the city expenses fall under either of those two categories, particularly the public health expenses. And that goes to things that you guys are familiar with, like testing and PPE and anything to set up those types of services or to maintain the, the spread of the virus from those um, departments. Um, the third is payroll expenses substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the emergency. Uh, that language was causing us some heartburn for a while. And then on Friday, the Treasury Department released additional guidance in their FAQ that now says that we may presume that the costs for public health and public safety employees are substantially, are payments for services substantially dedicated. So let me break that down again. The Treasury on Friday said we can assume that payroll costs for public health and public safety employees meet these expenses. Um, the other, the other two categories, they can't, category four can be for city expenses, but these are for expenses related to um, helping enforce COVID-related health measures. So think of this also as helping to enforce our stay-at-home, shelter-in-place, protecting vulnerable communities. And in the guidance, the um, Treasury provided examples of that, such as food delivery to uh, vulnerable residents, such as senior citizens, creating telework capabilities, um, paying for the paid and family sick leave that cities were not compensated for in the legislation, and also care for homelessness population. So again, this is to help the community, the city help the community respond to the measures we put in place. And then the last category is economic support for businesses. And so this is for the private sector and the city can use the money to provide funds to the private sector that had been affected by business interruption related to COVID. Again, I'm gonna, I just, we'll keep saying that, and I'm not saying related to COVID to be overly repetitive, but just to emphasize that when we look at any relief we're providing, we have to provide that corollary relationship back to the incident of COVID. And that's also provided within the dates we can use this money and how we can use this money. So again, even on our economic support to the business sector, this needs to be to help them get through the business interruption caused by closures and assist with those funds. Um, I will also tell you that even as of last night, that half-page guidance that Treasury first issued, I mean, I'm sorry, the half-page FAQ that they issued with the guidance that they updated on Friday, they updated it last night and it's now seven pages long. And I've just done a very cursory glance, but we'll provide more information of that to you all. This guidance uh, was also emailed to all of your offices on April twenty-third. Um, so you do have that, you and your staff do have this in your inboxes. But of course, my office always stands by, ready to assist with any questions. And now I'll pass it along to the next speaker.
So if we could um, have the IT people move to the next slide, the next speaker will be Juan Ortiz to talk about the uh, Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA and um, what is eligible for reimbursements through FEMA.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, good morning. Uh, once again, my name is Juan Ortiz. I'm the Director for Homeland Security and Emergency Management. Uh, traditionally, under a disaster declaration, we have, uh, at the federal level, the, the program is funded under the Stafford Act, which allows uh, the President to designate a presidential disaster to support local disasters through, through the state, uh, through their local state. Uh, this is what we normally uh, go through after a major disaster like a hurricane or a major flood. Or our last one was uh, last fall, excuse me, fall of twenty eighteen during the Colorado River flood and, and um, um, boil water notice. Uh, this is a seventy-five, twenty-five uh, 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 cost share where the federal government uh, basically reimburses the local community or the state uh, on a seventy-five cents uh, on the dollar for every um, uh, disaster-related unreimbursed expense that they've inquired. The local cost share, twenty-five percent, that's something that can either come from the local community or from the state. Um, the majority of time, that comes from the local community, but in some situations, sometimes states do provide, uh, provide some of that um, um, cost share. There's also other ways where that cost share can be uh, covered as by documenting your volunteer hours and the volunteer time can be matched to cover that uh, twenty-five percent share. In this disaster, we specifically have what we call a category B emergency protective measures uh, related to the COVID response that are eligible for uh, reimbursement. And some of these uh, examples of um, eligible activities are basically anything that we are doing in the community to protect the community from COVID response, uh, as a protective measure, uh, which includes costs for EOC operations or training or any technical assistance, anything that we're doing to protect the public, disinfecting public facilities, providing um, uh, other me- methods of uh, minimize the impact of COVID nineteen, providing um, testing and diagnosis, as well as any, any purchase of food or water, ice, or medicine that can be provided, uh, as well as uh, emergency medical treatment and transportation to COVID nineteen uh, patients. Um, these costs are, uh, start from the, what we call the opening of the presidential disaster, which is uh, so on this disaster for, in the state of Texas, goes back to January twentieth of uh, twenty twenty. So any cost from January twentieth until the disaster is closed. And at this point in time, there's no closure for this disaster. So the eligibility would uh, extend to a future date that has not been identified at this point by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Um, additional costs that uh, would be eligible will include also our mess, our efforts to provide security and law enforcement, as well as uh, temporary hiring of uh, personnel and, and contracts for labor support in, in areas where we need um, um, support, like, for example, what we're doing to support um, the protective lodges to provide uh, temporary nursing or, or other, uh, other efforts of, of such where we're hiring temporary labor. Um, right now, we're working with all the different departments to ensure that we're documenting all those costs. And we begin to outline and begin to organize what uh, what areas uh, we are, we're gonna be asking for reimbursement. And we have uh, brought in a consultant on board to help us organize those, those efforts and work on those departments to make sure that we're ready. At certain point in time in the disaster recovery process, we will have more specific meetings with the state and, and FEMA to start submitting those documentations and identify this, what we, what we call a project worksheet to submit those uh, the documented expenses. That's the, that will be the end of uh, my, my slide.
So Mayor and Council, this is um, Ed Vanino back. If we can move to the next slide, I'll start transitioning us into a proposed spending framework for our coronavirus response. And uh, this is a very complicated funding situation, much more so than a typical disaster such as floods or hurricanes, in the sense that there are just so many funding sources available and so many of the uh, uses of those funding sources overlap. I can think of at least a dozen sources of funding that are available to the city for the purchase of personal protective equipment. So maximizing our use of these funds, I'm still on slide eight. Um, maximizing our use of these funds, um, will really take a lot of thoughtfulness and strategic thinking. Um, we have organized the coronavirus response spending framework into three broad categories. Um, and I would ask you to think of this as, kind of think of our, um, think of our department program structure for the city budget. Uh, we have a fire department, and within the fire department, we have combat operations and um, wildfire mitigation as, as programs. Um, this will be the structure, this, this spending framework we're about to present would serve as the structure for the allocation of available resources. And we are targeting May twenty-first uh, council meeting for an initial recommendation to council on funding amounts for the different components of this structure. So even though we're more than two weeks away from that date, I would just, I think it's important that um, we uh, think about this in terms of uh, maintaining flexibility so that we have the room to maneuver and adjust and respond to the evolving conditions of this crisis. I mean, as I mentioned at the beginning, three components to this framework. Um, one related to emergency response, um, expenditures that the city is incurring and trying to recover those costs. Juan Ortiz is gonna come back and walk us through that. The second broad category is uh, meeting the medical and public health needs associated with the crisis. Uh, Stephanie Hayden will be on the line to talk through that section of the framework. Um, and then finally, economic recovery and support. Veronica Brusenos will come and um, talk to us, talk us through that slide. Um, and then um, we're gonna be looking for counsel once we're done with the staff presentation and once we're done hearing from the Economic Recovery Leadership Panel. Um, we are certainly gonna be looking for counsel to provide input into this framework to let us know if we feel there's um, any spending categories that we've missed and need to be addressed before we start um, coming up with a spending plan for these dollars. So with that as an introduction, I'm gonna turn it back to Juan, and if we go to the next slide, Juan will um, talk to us about our emergency response portion of the framework.
Mayor, can I ask a very quick question?
Mark, yeah, but I think we're, we're trying to get everybody out the hole. Let's let Juan speak and then we'll get the questions.
I didn't hear his three categories. I couldn't hear his second category.
Would you, Ed, you wanna repeat the three categories?
Yes, Mayor, I can do that. The, the three broad categories, and please keep in mind, there's, there's many subcategories within each of these areas, but the three broad categories are the emergency response, medical and public health needs, and economic support.
Okay, thank you. Juan?
Yeah, we are on slide nine.
Okay. In slide nine, uh, in the emergency response categories, there's lots of different things that we're doing uh, that we need to make sure we're documenting that are specifically in support of, of the emergency, um, excuse me, protective measures. And these are events that, uh, uh, activities that we were doing as we were looking at uh, and, and the enforcement of the, of the, uh, mass gathering um, restrictions that were put in place. And so event management, uh, what we were doing to support activities out in the field to ensure that people were adhering to the, the orders that were issued by both the mayor and the judge, uh, as, as well as uh, food that was being provided to support emergency activities, any training that was conducted, um, with our personnel to ensure that we were uh, up to speed with the latest uh, protective measures from COVID nineteen or any other additional training that was provided, especially in the, in the emergency operations center as we implemented new systems to ensure that we were able to manage these types of activities. Uh, there's lots of different examples of transportation calls that were being provided, both at uh, being able to transport uh, equipment, resources, personnel, some of our um, the different um, um, clients or guests that we were, that we were, that we are taking care of at the isolation facilities of Pro Lodge. Also the examples of the top, uh, some of the activities that we're able to uh, um, categorize in the emergency response. In some areas, we, we're also incurred some overtime where we had to uh, uh, have people come in and work extra hours. And so that overtime is eligible for reimbursement, um, as well as in situations where we have to backfill, if we have to backfill a situation, uh, uh, a position with somebody else and that incurs uh, overtime, um, depending on the, the category, the employee, um, um, some, the regular hours or the overtime hours or both are eligible for reimbursement. So we're having to work through and document who was, uh, who was actually backfilling. If we had to hire a, a contract person to come in and fill a position because they were backfilling for somebody else, then a hundred percent of that cost uh, would be something that would be eligible for reimbursement. Um, as, um, another area is the payroll expenses for certain staff, uh, and, and that um, uh, that we incur as a response to the COVID nineteen, as well as the, the need to um, to contract for storage in, in, in support of the different activities that could be either at the um, um, facilities that be contracted uh, at the different hotels or uh, expenses that may be incurred um, in other storage facilities as we are identifying places where, where storing personal protective equipment or other, other supplies that we have to uh, receive. Um, one of the other areas that uh, also i- in this category is what we're doing to educate the public with. public with the, what to do in response to COVID response. So our public information efforts, our language access contracts that we had to put in place to make sure that the information was accessible to everybody in the community. All of these types of activities are something that we're categorizing in the emergency response, and we continue to have expenses in those areas as we continue to make sure that we are current with what the orders and the recommendations to the public to ensure that we are doing what we can to protect ourselves from COVID. So these are all the tops of examples of emergency response categories that we have identified, and there may be some additional ones as we move forward. Ed?
Thanks, Juan. We're going to just move on to the next slide, and Stephanie Hayden will talk to us about the medical and public health needs.
Good morning. Thank you, Ed. What we know is we must continue to test, trace, and track. As you heard from Dr. Esq. earlier today, we must increase our testing efforts to 2,000 per day. We have to ensure our ability to increase our case investigations, our contact tracing, and active monitoring. We must protect our vulnerable populations, seniors, homeless, people with disabilities, just to name a few. We know it's very important that we have, we must educate and inform the public to be able to mitigate and slow the spread of COVID-19. Through our recovery effort, it is very important for us to start to think about our sheltering operations and ensure people have the basic needs that they need. Our use of telehealth, for example, our TV clinic, as well as our nursing virtual visits with new mothers, as well as our maternal infant outreach program. It is very important for us to always, always think about our education that we are providing our community, and look at how we are doing our outreach to our community, and ultimately ensuring our work is done with an equity lens. As you can see from the slide, we have an array of themes that we know fall under the medical and public health needs. And so that concludes my part of the presentation.
All right, if we could have the IT people go to the next slide, and Veronica Brusainos will talk to us about the economic support category of our spending framework, and then immediately transition into a discussion of our Economic Recovery Leadership Panel.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great, thank you. So I'm happy to be here with you today to talk a little bit about the spending framework in regards to economic recovery. As you're aware, our creative and business community has been hit hard in this time, and there are some opportunities within the framework that we have to provide some relief. So on the slide, you see we've included several bullets where we can provide this assistance. I want to highlight some of the main areas. The top, the first bullet is business assistance. So we see this in numerous ways throughout this slide, looking at our traditional loans and grants. I would like to highlight that this funding does allow for grants, which is a huge benefit, because we know that our businesses are, several of our businesses are in a situation where they can't, they don't know that they're going to have the ability to pay back a loan. So a grant is a great resource for our local business community. Childcare assistance, providing assistance to individuals as they are required to go back to work and needing to provide childcare, but also providing assistance to our childcares, our childcare centers, excuse me. We recognize that as centers open up, or try to open up, they're going to need some financial assistance to put proper precautions in place, make sure that they're providing social distancing and so forth. Cultural arts and music assistance, we, in particular in Austin, because of our vibrant creative economy, are cognizant of this, so we're able to provide some resources through this funding in that regard as well. So looking at, again, at potential grants through this and loans, potentially looking at how we can assist in this industry, and making sure that as we come back online, we're providing the appropriate health protections as well. Eviction counseling services. So we know that, we know that there is a huge concern for individuals that are, that are in a position of potentially being evicted, excuse me. So there are, there is funding a lot, or included for counseling services as well. Food assistance, the need to help those in need of food have access to that important resource. Nonprofit assistance, so another need in our community, and is an opportunity within this, these funds, is assistance for nonprofits. Our nonprofit ecosystem in the city of Austin is huge, and they employ several Austinites. So we will be looking to opportunities to provide that assistance as well. Let's get down to rental assistance. We, through this, will be able to provide additional rental assistance. You're aware that our housing department just released a new program this week. They're already seeing, they're seeing that demand quite high, and they knew that it was going to be that case. This is the way for us to identify what that demand is. So we will look to opportunities to provide rentals, additional rental assistance in that regard. And then finally, utility assistance, another key part of keeping our individuals and our households with the utilities that they need, particularly in a time where they may be at home more, and in need of assistance. So those are the main areas that the coronavirus funds would allow for us to provide some economic support. We're exploring all of these through our recovery efforts, and anticipate bringing programs back to you more that reflect the support. I'm going to go ahead and transition into our Economic Recovery Leadership Panel. So if I could ask our tech support to move us to the next slide, it's the final slide, Slide 13 of this presentation. And we've communicated in work sessions past, and we received a memo last night about our City of Austin Recovery Expert Leadership Panel. This panel has been convened for a few weeks now, and we have been meeting to discuss this approach of recovery. They are providing us some guidance and leadership on how we look at recovery of the city, and what, what principles do we want to put in place, what programs should we prioritize, and so forth, as we, as we pivot into this time of recovery. I'm going to say their names, and we have several of them on the, on the call with us today, but I wanted to make sure I acknowledge all of the members. I'm truly appreciative for their, their, their brain power coming behind this effort, and really, really giving us some guidance of the city. So we have Angelus Angelou, we have Charles Hinesout, John Hopkins, Ray Perryman, Victoria de Francisco Soto, Mark Sprague, Eric Tang, and Daniel Wright. On the phone, we have with us everybody, with the exception of Victoria, and with Mark Sprague. They were not able to, actually, Mark joined us earlier, but he had an internet outage in his neighborhood, so was not able to continue on with our call. But the rest are here, and once I walk through this last slide, I'm going to, we'll open it up for questions for all the speakers that you've heard so far, but also for questions for, with our leadership panel, since we have the benefit of having them present with us today. So I just wanted to summarize some of the discussion that we have heard in their discussion and deliberations as a panel. I wanted to break it down into two areas that they have really been focusing on. The discussion has focused on employee health, first of all. There's an acknowledgement that as we're looking at reviving our economy and bringing our businesses back online, we have to keep employees' health as a top priority. So some of the discussions have revolved around some of these initiatives to keep both employees and the public safe, to look at ramping up contact tracing, to look at having some more opportunity for COVID-19 testing, to make sure that we're providing PDE as people return to work, and to provide guidance to businesses on how to protect their employees. That's some of the key points of where we would, where they have focused their conversations. And then the other area, the other category of interest has been employment security. So looking at workforce development that allows for employees to invest in capital for business adoption, so employees can keep their jobs, provide training to work from home, connecting employers to safety equipment for their employees, and providing guidance on how to open without risking employee and customer health. Those are the main areas of discussion where this panel has been in the past couple of weeks. But I also wanted to acknowledge that we're, the two themes that we're seeing throughout all of our discussions, not only with the panel, but with our recovery efforts with the city, is the need to lead with equity. There have been a lot of discussions about how is, we're looking at recovery, how several areas are impacting our residents of color in a more significant way, both in the health perspective, but also in the perspective of the wages that are earned, and the unemployment, and so forth. And then there's an interest and a desire to drive with data. So we're having conversations about how we can work with our, with our university that's here, the University of Texas, to look at tracking some of these data. Three of our panel members are professors at UT, and they have some ideas on how we can really make sure that we're getting the data that we need to have a better understanding of the need in our community, but also the areas that are impacted the most, and how that impacts our community demographically, so that we can apply resources and solutions in a way that is equitable, and that it prioritizes the area where we need to provide those solutions. So that concludes my presentation. With that, I would open it up to questions of any of the speakers that we've had so far, as well as our panelists that are with us on the phone.
Great, thank you, and thanks to everybody who participated in that presentation. I'll lead us off with some quick questions. The FEMA money that we get, is that outside of the $170 million coronavirus funding? And is there any limit to the FEMA money we can pull down?
That is outside, sir, and there's, there is, along this is an unreimbursed, excuse me, along as it say disaster-related expense that's not reimbursed by insurance, and it's, but it is reimbursed at 75%. So there's still like 25% local cost share. And there may be specific other requirements that need to be calculated to make sure that it's an eligible expense.
I don't know if we're able to use the coronavirus money we have to help with our 25% or not, but it might be a way to leverage that. I know that Los Angeles is using the FEMA money to provide testing to anybody in their community, asymptomatic or otherwise, that would like to get a test. But it sounds like they're pulling down a huge amount of FEMA dollars that I think has been reapproved. I hope we're taking a look at that. I have a question about the FAQ that came out from the Treasury Department. There was the, the one paragraph that came out on Friday. Did you say, Bree, that there were seven pages spanning on that one paragraph that just came out today?
There were, yes. Today, there were seven additional pages on additional items and answering questions.
Okay. Did the additional pages today speak to that paragraph about the flexibility of the coronavirus, coronavirus funding for cities?
That, that paragraph remained the same, Mayor. I also can speak to your FEMA question just a little bit to provide some guidance. The question was asked in Treasury about the 25%, and they have, in a phone call, and they said that they have not applied on that yet. I think they're trying to decide if they feel like locals should make that match, because we've always made that match. But I also say what's difficult is FEMA reimbursement lags by years, and we have to spend this money by December 30th, either way.
Got it. That's important. With respect to the one paragraph that came out last week, it reads to me really broadly. It almost looks as if we put the money toward public safety salaries, which exceed the total amount of our coronavirus funding, that we might just be freeing up other dollars that we can spend for things. Is it, is it actually that you could just spend 170 on public safety salaries?
Mayor, I read the language that broadly, too. And in addition, there's a Treasury Secretary Mnuchin at a town hall with Trump on Friday, where he, he basically reinforced that that reading of that language is as broad as we're taking it, and was designed to be, to make sure first responders don't suffer any revenue issues due to this, or, let me, not revenue issues, sorry, funding issues due to this. So it does read that broadly.
And that would, that would certainly be reasonable and appropriate, given the impact on revenues that cities are suffering because of what's happening, and certainly our revenue in this city goes to a large extent toward public safety. I really appreciate what staff's doing to help us come up with a budget. I hope that there's something coming back, manager, to us on the 21st, similar to how you come up with a budget for the city under your charter obligations that has the staff's best thinking on how we should spend money. What is our burn rate right now, in terms of what Juan and others have, we see the dollars that, as a council, we've been directing to help with some quick emergency needs. Do we have a feel for how much we've spent so far of that coronavirus funding for the Emergency Operation Command for testing, tracing, for all the other things that we're doing?
Mayor, run out, we're a little slightly over 17 million.
17 million in the first six weeks, is it appropriate to, I'm trying to figure out what your estimate is that we're going to need. You have one yet of how much you anticipate spending over the next three, four, five months? I guess it all depends to a degree on what happens with this toe dip that the governor's doing.
Mayor and Council, obviously, those are variables, but that's our, our goal is to come back on the 21st with some of those estimates, and so we can have an accurate discussion around what we currently know at that point in time.
And the 17 million dollars that we've spent thus far in those operations, I think there's a parallel expense that Travis County is also paying out of their dollars for their share of this combined effort. Is that correct?
Correct, and that, that's, that's separate from what the county has spent. And we're just updated, actually, it's $22 million that we have documented up to date, and there's more additional costs that just have not been, they're still coming, that we're, we expect that number to increase by this Thursday.
Okay, thank you. All right, colleagues, I'll pass the floor over. Senator Flanagan?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of quick ones. On the, one of the first slides, Ed, you talked about the monies that went to counties. Do you know, in terms of how the formulas worked, if Williamson County's portion included City of Austin or not? Since our, our part of Wilco is, and they don't have any cities, if I'm correct, that have individual funding in Wilco, because you had to have, I think, 500K population. But did the formulas include the Austin part of Wilco or not in that bucket of funds?
So I'd have to check with Wilco to be sure of this, but generally, my understanding of how the formulas work are that cities with populations of five, of above $500,000 that receive their own allocation were backed out of the county populations as part of the calculations for what the county would receive. And I think that's why you see Travis County seeing a smaller dollar amount for the relief fund than what Williamson County receives, because the City of Austin's population is backed out from their population count as the funding was being, was being allocated. We could follow up with Williamson County to get more information about exactly how their amount was calculated, and if it was just a portion of the City of Austin's population that was backed out, or, or all of it. I don't have that exact detail.
Yeah, I would appreciate that work. I think the- I think the math isn't always perfect at the federal level, and certainly as we move quickly, that that becomes more likely. One thing to note, on the, the other slide about EDA grants, and this is for my colleagues, I've been working on the EDA stuff through my role as Chair of the Economic Development Board at CapCog, and we're still waiting for the rules on EDA funds. And the last I heard that that was still maybe a week or two away. Veronica, do you, do you know if there's an update on when those EDA rules might come out?
Councilmember, you're correct. I've also heard, actually, I heard it might be more like two or three weeks, but we're keeping an eye and working closely with our regional office to make sure that we're aware when those rules are released.
Great. And so I'm, we're, we're in the middle of the five-year EDA plan at the CapCog Board or the Econ Dev Board, and we're, we're trying to incorporate CapCog staff into that analysis as well. So hopefully, we can advantage our whole region in those funds. I'm also interested in kind of seeing a layout of a larger strategy for 170 million, but also at the same time, I think we've all been pretty clear that we want to get help into the community as quickly as we can. And so being able to pilot or rapid prototype these types of programs with a smaller portion of that fund seems like the right move while we figure out the strategy for the bulk of it.
Sounds good. Councilmember Kitchen.
I have sort of two category, well, two questions, two basic questions. One of them is, and first off, let me say thank you for the staff for laying this out. It's very, very helpful. I have a question about the scope of what we will be seeing on the 21st. I have been suggesting the, the resolution that my co-sponsors and I filed for, you know, for everyone's consideration and to add to speaks some to the scope, and I'm wanting to see if we're on the same page with you, City Manager, and with Ed, on what that scope is. So, so what we're talking about in the resolution is a scope that comes back in the spending framework, like, like you said, Ed, but also that it gives us a comprehensive look with dollars, or perhaps percentages of all of our available funding. We know there has to be contingencies, and we know we don't have all the dollar amounts yet, but we do know we're getting started on quite a few things. Most of it, many of our colleagues, just everybody, I would say, has been putting forward resolutions for different, very important needs, and we've passed some of them, and we'll pass more on Thursday. So my thought is that, that what will be coming back to us on the 21st will reflect everything that every, that we have passed so far in terms of buckets of funding, that it would include the whole universe of funds that are available. And then it will give us an idea of the dollars by bucket and perhaps the percentage by bucket. So I want to make sure that I'm, that's what I've been thinking of, and is that what you're thinking of, City Manager, when we talk about what's coming back to us with dollars by bucket on the 21st?
At a high level, council member, that is. I think that that's our goal, to have that type of discussion on the 21st. Obviously, there's going to be a lot of assumptions made and contingencies that we're going to plan for, and even potentially different scenarios that will present. But the framework that you saw today will guide that discussion. The one additional, I don't know if it's caveat, but we do hope that we'll have that these next two weeks to have those conversations. And so to agree that we don't see any additional programs or additional discussions coming from items from council that would at least help us continue to put that framework in the appropriate buckets. So, but that, but to answer your question, at a high level, that is our intention. And I don't know if Ed wants to say anything more to that.
Okay.
I'd only add on that we are planning, we're looking to align the expenditures that have already been approved by the City Council, the $15 million for the RISE program and the million and a half dollars of funding for the Music Disaster Relief Fund, the bridge loans, and the additional items that are on this week's agenda. We'll be looking to max those up to this spending framework and the funding amounts, the initial funding amounts that we would be looking to get council support for on the 21st. And just as the City Managers mentioned, I really do think we have to stress the importance for flexibility, because we're not going to have all the answers by the 21st. If we're going to be as strategic as possible with the uses of these funds, we're going to need to have some flexibility. As I mentioned, there's at least half a dozen different sources of funding for personal protective equipment, and so we just need to make sure that we have the ability to put those dollars for that particular fund where we have the, perhaps the greatest restrictions, and then leave less restrictive funds for other purposes. And that's kind of, that's going to be a work in progress.
Okay. I think that answers my question there. I think the, the other important aspect of it that I think that you spoke to, City Manager, was that, that this is comprehensive in nature. In other words, one of the things we're trying to do is get an overall, both of what we've committed to date and identified to date, as well as our projected needs, so that we're working from the perspective of an overall view of what our budget might be. So I think I'm hearing you, you say that. Is that, is that right, City Manager?
That's correct. And again, just one, one final thing and a nod to the work of the expert panel that Veronica has assembled, it will be seen through that lens. I mean, they gave us some feedback, and we continue to give her additional guidance on how we should be looking at that. And so we'll be using that framework as well to guide those discussions.
Okay, then my last question, I have, actually, it's just a comment. I have two, I have a comment about the buckets, the, the spending framework buckets, the three major buckets. Those make sense to me with one question and one caveat. I am concerned that the vulnerable populations is a sub-bullet with so many other sub-bullets under medical and public health needs. I had been thinking more in terms of four buckets, so that you pulled out the, the needs of the vulnerable populations. So that's one thing. And then the second thing is the economic support and recovery. If I heard that right, I wasn't sure if you all were characterizing it as economic support and recovery. I think that's important, because I think it's really important that we identify, you know, programs and funding, et cetera, related to resiliency, because we've been talking in terms of coming out of this better, and better able as a community, and also in terms of considering future waves. So I, I heard different things. I heard it called economic support sometimes and called economic recovery. This is a question. Can, can, is this bucket designed to include those kinds of programs that will make us stronger into the future?
This is Ed Vanino. I think it does include those types of programs. I would just say that the wording we use for the broad buckets, we selected because it aligns exactly with the wording from the Coronavirus Relief Fund Treasury guidelines. And so we were trying to max this up as closely as possible, since that's the largest bucket of funding, we were trying to use similar language, and the term economic support is what they refer to it as.
Okay, I just want to be clear that it, but I think I heard you say yes, but in our mind, that includes recovery, resiliency types of activities, right?
To the, yes, to the extent they're eligible for the use of the Coronavirus Relief Fund or some of our other funding sources, that's certainly an area we want to address.
If I could expand upon, I think I agree with what Ed said, and we're looking, this is one piece of how we're looking at recovery. So when we're looking at our existing programs, our existing budget, we're looking at how can we best support both economic support and economic recovery? And honestly, this is going to be a phased approach. We've got the immediate need to stabilize our economic community and then get to that more mid, midpoint of stability, and then long-term, recently experiencing recovery. And I completely agree, but there's certainly a need for economic resiliency in our, in our community, and we'll be looking to those solutions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Tovo.
Thank you. Just to kind of follow up on something Councilmember Kitchen said, as, as we bring, as the manager brings back that plan, I, I want to underscore what I think I heard her saying. You know, as I look through each of these sections, it's, it looks as if each of these sections really has opportunities to invest in more long-term solutions from shelters and quarantine facilities, you know, to the extent that we can really invest in pro lodges now that could provide longer-term permanent supportive housing. I think that's, that needs, I hope that our staff are kind of approaching each one of these possible expenditures or expenditures with an eye toward how those could become part of a permanent strategy, so that we're not entering into leases with hotels that we know are not going to be interested in selling, but that we're really looking at, at hotels and motels that offer the opportunity potentially for long-term purchase. And I guess I would apply that to other areas as well. Food access and food assistance is critical, obviously, right now. What are some of the sustainable, long-term solutions that we could also be investing in, like community gardens and, and allowing partnerships on city-owned land for those community gardens? I think we all got an email about that yesterday, but that's something that's bubbled up a little bit here and there. In addition to providing that critical immediate food assistance, you know, how can, how can the plan that you bring back also embed within it those longer-term permanent solutions that will, that will help us build a resilient community for the future? So those are just a couple ideas. I did have a quick question about storage and what that means on 11. You know, I think I, I'm not, I'm not clear enough on, say, storage and public information language access, as they're noted on page 11, to know whether those two are examples where we could be investing in longer-term solutions. If the storage is along the lines of what we've, what we've identified as a need in this community for a while for individuals experiencing homelessness, for example, then I think that's another opportunity. And then, language, you're on, you're on TV. Language access, you know, that too is something else that, that we've had lots of conversations and lots of stakeholder input about, and I understand the need for immediate language assistance, but are there some more sustainable solutions we could put in place now with those dollars? So again, just, just the approach I hope that we're taking toward all of these expenses. When that framework comes back, I'd love to have some more information about those other grants, those other grant lines at the federal level that we're applying for, the EDA, IMLS, NEA, NEH, just so we can all be mindful of, of whether the resources, of what those other existing programs are. Obviously, I think we should always try to use, try to use those more specific grant lines for more specific requests, so that we can use this more general money for, you know, the really extensive general needs. And that'll help us understand whether that balance, whether, whether we're striking the right balance at the city of, of going after those targeted grants or targeted projects, rather than funding those targeted projects through more general funding. And then a technical question about, I think it was early on in the slide. On page two, I think this is a question for Ed. So there are certain needs that can be funded under the Community Development Block Grant. Can we fund some of those same-named needs through the Coronavirus Relief Fund? So for example, if we wanted to spend more money on emergency rental assistance, could we do so under the Coronavirus Relief Fund rather than under our Community Development Block Grant? I think the answer is yes, but I just wanted to verify that.
Councilmember Tovo, this is Bree. Oh, go ahead, Ed. Go ahead.
No, you go ahead, Bree. Take it.
Okay, thank you. You can use the Coronavirus Relief Fund to supplement funding, but not in place of funding, if that makes sense.
That makes complete sense, but that's not exactly the question I was asking. I guess what I'm wondering is if we wanted to spend more than 4.6 million on the things named in the Community Development Block Grant eligibility, could we tap into the Coronavirus Relief Fund for some of that additional money? I think, again, I think the answer is yes. If we wanted to do, if we wanted to spend 15 million on rental assistance, we could take it out of the Coronavirus Relief Fund rather than use our Community Development Block Grant, right?
So the answer is yes, and to the extent that you also make sure it's targeted towards people impacted by COVID-19.
Absolutely. Okay.
Got it, okay.
Great. Thank you. And then, you know, just one other example, and I don't mean to belabor this point, but I just think it's a really important one as we think about our investments and how we make investments that deal with the emergency situation that are going to be longer-term solutions. You know, something as sanitation, I see on one of the lists, to the extent that we can invest in more permanent restroom facilities, for example, rather than just relying on temporary ones. I think that's, I think that's another, another example of where investing upfront or soon in those longer-term solutions might help us get, really leverage our dollars. So thank you again for all the, all the work, all of you on the call.
Mayor, just before you call the next council member, just a reminder, we have this expert panel available. I know a few of them have to leave in a, in a few minutes, and so if you could potentially prioritize some questions for that expert panel, they've been instrumental in helping us think through this. So I just leave you with that.
Okay. Okay, we'll do that then. Let's start then with questions that relate to the very last part of the presentation, and then we'll double back. Councilmember Poole, then Councilmember Flanagan, then Councilmember Alter. Leslie, you're muted. Do you have a question to the last, the last part? Can't hear you. We'll come back to you. Councilmember Flanagan.
Yeah, I'm, I'm interested in the, the challenges that I'm hearing from, from landlords versus rental assistants and this kind of financial system food chain that's being disrupted. You know, we, we've done a, started some initial programs for rental assistance, but I'm also hearing from, you know, an Austinite who owns two or three rental properties in their own neighborhood, like my landlord does, and trying to figure out what the banking system is up to in terms of making sure that landlords have that same level of permission we're asking landlords to have with their tenants. What are, what are you all seeing in terms of the economic system around this question? And, and how are we, how can we be sure that we're not kind of putting money down a rabbit hole that just ends up at Bank of America or Wells Fargo?
Mayor, this is John Hockenhouse. Can I answer that?
Yes.
So Councilmember Flanagan, one of the interesting things we are seeing is that most banks, whether they are big national banks or more regional and local, have made what amounts to a policy decision to give most of their borrowers about three months of, of payment relief. Take the next two or three months off, don't worry about it, everything's fine. Well, that has made it very easy for landlords who have debt to also mirror that and to say, okay, fine, since I don't have to pay the debt service on the property I own, I'm going to give my tenants some relief. And that's particularly true in commercial situations. And so where that's going to come to a head is probably in about July, around the first of July, where the banks are like, okay, now it's time to start paying because you've got a loan obligation on this property, and that means that the landlord may very well then come back and say to their commercial tenant, okay, you've got to start paying. And that's where it's going to get interesting, because many commercial tenants are going to say, look, my business isn't back to 100% of where it was before the pandemic. I can't make my loan payment or my, excuse me, my rent payment, or at least not at the level that my, my lease calls for, and that may be the point where we start to see some, some tension around all this.
And that might be right at the time that we're looking at a second spike.
Yep.
That, that's something that I, I still have a lot of concern about in terms of where the funds are going.
Okay. Councilmember Poole? For our expert panel? For our expert panel? Leslie still can't hear you. We'll come back. Councilmember Alter?
Thank you. Um, I appreciate Councilmember Flanagan's question on the landlords, and I hope that we can think that whole chain through even further. So my, my question for the panel relates to some of the comments that previous colleagues have made about the desire to make investments that improve our resilience and increase sort of the sustainability of the investment, because this may be over a longer period, and there is an opportunity here to come out of this stronger in some way than where we started. It has laid bare a lot of challenges within our city, but I'm not necessarily seeing in the categories that were presented for spending, nor in the conceptual uses so much that does that. And I wanted to ask, this may be the next stage, and maybe more of the, okay, we did our immediate, now we're doing this sort of, okay, when you actually open doors, but how should we be thinking about those kind of investments in resilience or that have more of a long-term impact?
I'll take a shot at that one, I guess. Um, if that's okay. One thing I think is very important, and I think that our group has done a good job of discussing this and keeping it at the forefront, is the fact that, that it does need to be equitable in what you do. And part of what you need to be doing for sustainability, we can treat, we can do, emphasize equity, that is going to contribute to the sustainability, because it's going to be supporting vulnerable populations. I think the other thing that, that does is, I, I've been trying to look beyond the immediate situation, and I know that has to be the focus right now, most of the conversations around that direction. But as I look beyond that and say, what are companies going to be looking for because of making investments in the future, what types of communities and that sort of thing, they're going to be looking at issues like equity, issues like sustainability, the safety net, sustainability, the health system, and those kinds of things, much more than they did in the past. And, and I have, I want to, me and the group, I've been working with, uh, John and Charles and, and Angelo and everybody else out there, that it's really been, I think, a productive discussion.
You all, excuse me for a second. Can, can you all understand? I don't know if you're on speakerphone, you're coming across a little bit garbled.
I apologize. I'm, I'm actually on my computer, and I don't know. I apologize.
All right, now you sound good. Now you sound good.
Okay, well, I leaned forward a little bit, maybe that's, maybe that's. Okay, sure, well, I, I was just saying that, that it's good that you are looking at it and trying to think about the sustainability issues, because I think, and I try to think through what happens after this and what's going forward, even things like the equity results, and equity and recovery is a part of sustainability, because you're, you're taking care of the vulnerable populations. And I think once we, as we start to come out of this, and I know your immediate focus has to be on, on other things, but as we start to come out of this, I think the global investment community, the global business community is going to look at it a lot differently. And I think things like sustainability and safety nets and, and this quality healthcare systems and those kinds of things are going to get a lot more attention than they used to, and I think Austin is an ideal situation to, to be at the forefront of some of that. And I think it is important that as you're talking about the immediate needs, to deal with the immediate needs, you are indeed focusing on these sustainability issues, because that, to me, that's in terms of defining your long-term future. I mean, at some point, we are going to get a vaccine, we are going to do something, we are going to come to a new normal, and I think one aspect of that new normal is something that if you think about it now, our group has certainly, John and Angelo and Charles and everybody on the group has certainly been focusing on this, and I think as, as you look forward in this way, I think that's something that, that can be very productive to see.
And this, this is Eric Tang. Could I take it back off of that?
Yes, go ahead.
So I think, you know, Dr. Eskot said it best and clearly earlier, when he said the people who are getting sick are the people who are working. And my firm belief is that they are not unaware of the risk, and they're not unaware of what you need to do to socially distance, so on and so forth, but they are disciplined by the fact that if they do not go to work, that they will not have a job, and there's not going to be a guarantee of their rehiring. And on top of that, some of them are not eligible for unemployment for a variety of reasons. And when we think about the construction industry, it's clear, you know, the data's clear that these are, these are the decisions that people are making. Their businesses are open, they've got to go, even if they have an immunocompromised family member, even if they themselves are immunocompromised. As we enter a phase where restaurants reopen, and many of the people in construction are also in that same industry, in, in restaurant work, how are we addressing that calculation that they're making in their head, where they know the risks, but there's no protection for them economically should they not go to work? And my question, or the question I think we should work on is, can some of the CARES funding be directed towards providing them more protections so that they make the right decision that allows them to protect their, their safety, their family's safety, the safety of the public, and at the same time, not have to make the false choice between that and economic security? So that's kind of where I think we should be focusing our energies. What part of this funding can be used to, to take away some of the, um, some of the dilemma that these workers face? And of course, as others have pointed out, the racial disparities in terms of who has to make that decision is clear, with the vast majority of them being Latino low-income workers. And, you know, the last thing I'll say is, I have family members in New York who are frontline workers. My brother runs an ER in Queens, and he was infected, you know, he recovered, he got back in the ER, and upon his return, you know, he had these workers at Krispy Kreme Donuts, like, you know, offering free donuts to the hospital workers and a lot of free food for hospital workers, and in his mind, he, all he could think of is, you, you young people should be home, most of them Black and Latino low-income workers. You shouldn't really be out here making free donuts for healthcare workers. We're spending all this money trying to get people well, but we're also extending the problem by not protecting these low-income workers and giving them options to be home without having to lose economic, um, security. So I think that's what we as a panel mean when we talk about equity, to just kind of drill it down a bit more. How can we, again, um, use some of these resources towards ensuring that these people are not given this false choice between their health and their economic livelihoods?
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I wasn't sure we were to plug in consideration of the RISE Fund, and I think what the gentleman, gentleman previously just said is exactly was the motivation behind RISE and not having people have to make that, that choice. I know in our economic, I forget which cabinet, I'm on one, the main one and the sub-panel, and we've talked about the numbers where we can see specifically, um, how, about what the number is of those families who, there's different ways to look at the statistics on, you know, people who have less than 30 days of savings, like, you know, the paycheck-to-paycheck kind of situation that a lot of our minority families are in. And so I don't really have a question, I just want to make sure that this, I feel like this is an important part of the discussion that we're thinking about. The, the, the need is obviously there, is what the RISE Fund was specifically, um, was specifically set up to do, and, sorry, why, why do they always, she hasn't, she hasn't been in the room the entire time, start talking. Was specifically set up for that reason. And so, um, I know that there was one organization that, I, I just want to understand the, so May 21st, I guess that is a question, sorry. May 21st, there's going to be a presentation on, on the specific allocations, is that what I'm hearing?
I'll have Ed jump in as well, but, you know, the, those broad categories, three larger categories and then the subbullets under that, we would just be taking that to the next level and to the extent that we can, put some estimates for both what we have spent in those categories and then what we project to spend, and then have a conversation around what are the different scenarios that we might play out to have that be the budget for, for a COVID response. So my current question is yes.
Okay. And so, um, this kind of, you know, it's the discussion we had a little previously about testing and, and where the fund's going and what the allocation is. It's kind of along the lines that the, the, the supply chain, so to speak, that Jimmy referred to specifically to rent and tenants. If we are going to be allocating additional funding for more testing, I think I heard this, but I just want to make sure that that is prioritized for the, the industries that are having to work right now. And so I know, for example, obviously like nursing homes and anywhere with vulnerable populations, if there's additional testing, that would just give families peace of mind if they can get even regular testing, you know, every two weeks, every, whatever, once a month or to, to get regular. And that also applies to, you know, I'm hearing from other mothers of young children, the constant confusion on whether the current order still only allows childcare to be for essential workers, and if not, how it would give mothers peace of mind in, you know, trying to keep our sanity, and maybe even getting part-time, uh, being able to send our, our children part-time. But there's been a discussion around, you know, can, can those centers get recurrent testing at those centers so parents have peace of mind if they're going to even send their children to childcare on a part-time basis or whatever? And, and then also requirements around, you know, the, the workers wearing masks and, and I, I know we can't, we're not supposed to force at this point because of the governor, but I just wanted to make sure that we were thinking about all that, the increase, the need for RISE is there, and, and I was going to ask, I'll, I'll check in with Stephanie later, Director Hayden, about, um, to understand, you know, to get an update on RISE, because it's my understanding, one of the nonprofits was able to get that, that, that funding out really quick. And I heard the need to spend this money, that specifically RISE Fund is specifically responding to COVID, and if we need a place to, to, to quickly get help to folks, there's an opportunity there.
Okay? Anything else for the expert panel? It's, uh, it's, uh, 11:45 before we let those folks go. Okay, we're going to let those folks go, but I do want to thank you for what you guys are doing to, to help and assist us. It's going to be critical, obviously, for, for the city to make sure that, that we come out of this strong and we've leveraged our dollars to do that, and you guys bring special expertise, and we appreciate that. Colleagues, it's 11:45. Councilmember Poole?
All right.
Go ahead.
Hear me this time?
Yes.
Done away with all the air buds and headphones and just talking to the computer. I just had two quick questions, and it's just a reiteration, Bree and Ed, FMLA additional pay that the council approved, I think I was a co-sponsor on it, through reserves, these, this additional pay for family medical feedback can now be reimbursed with federal dollars? Is that correct? And is that about a $2,000 delta?
So Bree, feel free to chime in, but I do not, my understanding is that the additional pay, council's decision to fund pay at 100% as opposed to the 66%, that additional pay would not be allowable.
And so do you have a, a back-of-the-inked-work estimate for how much that is, that we would receive that reimbursement? I mean, it's not a reimbursement, in pain instead of our sources different? And while Ed's talking about that, it's not the best question in the world, I don't know. The last one, it sounds like we can cover public health and public safety payroll at 100%. It's presumed that they are 100% occupied with the COVID response. Am I hearing that right? I think Bree, you were talking about that.
This, that again, that is our understanding of the new Treasury guidelines, and so we are continuing to have conversations with other budget and intergovernmental relations people across the country on that topic, because it's caught us all a bit off-guard, but that is our understanding of it, and it would provide us with substantially more flexibility in the use of these funds.
That's, that was really great news. I'm glad they spent the time to get us those additional seven pages. Thanks so much, and thanks, everybody, for all your hard work.
Okay, colleagues, 11:45. Anything else? Any other questions on this? Council, I'm thinking 11:45, we might do is see if we end the questions on this, is continue, break for lunch, and then come back and do the six polled, uh, items. Councilmember Alter? And Councilmember Kasar?
Thank you. Um, I had a question, I don't know if this is for Bree. I understand that, um, our schools are getting support for providing food to students, but what other kind of support are our schools getting, and is there going to be a gap there that we may, um, be called upon to help with at some point? Or is that, you know, is that coming from the state? Where, what, what's happening with our schools in terms of additional funding to help them? I mean, most other units of government are getting some assistance, but I'm not sure what schools are getting.
Who is it that should speak to this?
Um, I, Mayor, this is Ed Van, you know, I can't speak to it in regards, I don't have an answer, but I can commit to, to reach out to Austin Independent School District, their financial staff, and find out what if any, um, federal assistance they're receiving. I'm not aware of any at this point in time, I just can't say that for sure they're not receiving any.
Okay. And I, and I do want to flag here that I really appreciate Councilmember Tovo's resolution that helps to provide additional food via the distribution systems that our school districts have already set up, that also employs some of our restaurant workers. I think that's a, a great way, and, and to the extent that we can find examples that, fund multiples, I appreciate it. The other question I had was in terms of expenses, um, did we incur cost for moving to telework? And where does sort of just the cost of moving our own workforce into this new setup and things that we are incurring to continue operations that are different than what we originally budgeted for, where does that fall into these categories?
This is Ed Van, you know, again, we have incurred costs related to transitioning to teleworking, and that would be eligible for the Coronavirus Relief Fund, and maybe if WAN is still on the line, I believe it might also be eligible for FEMA funds. Certainly for the, yes, sir.
Yeah, that, that is correct. Some of that will, will fall in the category of protective measures to protect the critical infrastructure and making sure that we are able to still be able to provide the services to our citizens to keep the, to keep the communities moving forward. So yes, some of that would be eligible for reimbursement. We're still trying to identify what those specific costs are. An example would be when the EOC moved and implemented, um, Teams platform to allow for more of a virtual environment, that's an example of, would be, would be an eligible cost.
Great. Um, I hope that we'll be able to see some of that more clearly in two weeks when we have that spending framework. I would like to see, you know, as, as Councilmember Togen and Tovo flagged, I would like to see a little bit more of thinking about the recovery piece, whether we call it recovery or not, but things that are going to, um, allow us to continue to meet the needs of the community over the long term. So I, I didn't see anything on here for improving broadband access, and I'd like to see kind of workforce development really called out there as part of that. We may also, um, need to support our businesses and nonprofits in a kind of a more marketing type way, and I know there's some thought about that percolating in the, in the community. Then the last comment that I wanted to make was that I appreciated Councilmember Flanagan's comment about the need to kind of prototype, and I think that, that's part of what we're doing with the rent program, is we don't actually know what the demand is out there and how, how it plays out in some of the dimensions of that. And so that initial money will, that initial lottery that we're doing will provide us some of the data. And so that initial money will, um, that initial lottery that we're doing will provide us some of the data that we just don't have. Um, and I think similarly, um, some of the programs that we have in item 23 also will do that. Um, and I think it's, it's really important that we, you know, try to prototype and figure out how, how to make things work most effectively and where we're having the biggest impact. And build in that ability to reiterate, to iterate and to prototype and to kind of have that flexibility as we move forward with our spending plan since we have so much uncertainty and our data is so, so poor. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kasar.
So Mayor, I just wanted to know, process-wise here, you mentioned that you were going to start discussing items after lunch. But we wanted to ask the expert panel things, but then we didn't all get to chime in on Ed's, uh, presentation, the presentation beforehand. So when is the right time for us to talk about that?
The time is now, and if we have a lot of questions, we could break for lunch and come back from lunch to do that. I just wasn't sure how many, how much questioning we, we have. With respect to, uh, the rest of the report, how many, uh, how many of you have questions that you want to be able to go into? I see Anne and Greg. Anybody else on the balance of the report? Well, let's stay here right now, then let's finish and the report. Greg, why don't you ask your questions now, then we'll go to Anne. See if anybody else has any questions.
Given the time, I'll, I'll, I won't ask questions. I'll just, uh, reiterate something that I think is in Councilmember Kitchen's resolution, which is just my continued support for, in the emergency response category and the medical and public health response category, to do everything we can to make sure that those are adequately and fully funded. Because I think that we all understand from Dr. Meyer's presentation at the last work session, the best thing we can do for economic recovery is to make sure that we contain and do every, the best we can on the public health response. Uh, so that we prevent not only thousands of deaths, but a third or fourth lockdown. Um, and so I've, I've supported it and I think we all still need to be highlighting and building out the economic recovery part of this. But if we, manager, as you bring back something in a couple of weeks, I absolutely, and I think all of us should ask, have we potentially shorted ourselves in any way a public health and medical response to this? Because the question is how, how low of a, of a recover, you know, how much, what are we recovering from? If we're having to recover from three or four lockdowns economically, it's so much worse. Um, and so I think, you know, you have to make sure people stay fed and we have to keep the infrastructure going economically. But I just want to reemphasize the, the importance of making sure we absolutely don't underfund it anyway, the first two slides.
Okay. Councilmember Kitchen?
Oh, and thank you, Councilwoman Kasar, for that, uh, helping us keep our eye on the ball there. That is some language that we have written into the budget resolution that you're co-sponsoring, so thank you. My question, uh, is something that you may not know right now, because I'm not sure if you're thinking about it this way, Ed. But perhaps you can get it to me if you don't. I'm, I'm curious, um, I, I heard in response to the mayor's question that we'd spent about 17 million, if I heard so far, on public health response. What I'm trying to understand is how much have we spent so far with regard to, um, meeting the, the, uh, the challenges in nursing facilities? So that includes testing, that includes strike forces, that includes PPEs, other kinds of things. Do you, do you have an order of magnitude idea of how much that has been to date?
Uh, Councilmember, this is Ed Ben. You know, I don't have that. I would be happy to get it for you. If there's anybody else on the call who knows that information, please feel free to use, um, sign in.
Ed, this is Juan, uh, in the same position. I don't have that specific cost, but we can, uh, we, we can come back and, um, provide you a report of what those costs are.
That would be great. At this point, I'm just, uh, asking order, order of magnitude, not exact numbers. But that would be helpful for me to understand, um, our resolution, um, 59 that relates to the additional work and the additional, um, resources that we need to, to, to devote to this immediate effort. Um, I'd like to understand what we've devoted so far and then that will give us all an idea of what additional levels of resources are necessary to, um, to achieve mitigation and address the challenges that we've identified for our nursing.
Manager, uh, as you go, thanks for the presentation staff on, on these issues. I would ask that you fill in as many of the blanks as you possibly can on the 21st. Uh, you said we're not going to have all the answers then. My hope is you'll give us a proposed answer to almost everything. Because into that vacuum, uh, it just, you give us something we can work off of, we keep on, I think that'd be very helpful. And with regard to what Anne said and, and at the end, I would add to the base priorities tracing. I would love for our city to do better than, than any city in the country. Uh, because it appears as if that's going to be one of the real significant ways that we're able to reduce, uh, the infection, testing, tracing, and the vulnerable populations seem to be the three things that we really need to do really, really well. I think that's how Director Aiden started her presentation. All right, colleagues, uh, we're going to break for lunch and then come back and do the, uh, polled, uh, items. Uh, it is, uh, right now, uh, noon. You want to come back at 1:00? That sounded right. Okay, we're going to then, here it is, noon. We're going to take a rethes of this council meeting until 1:00. Uh, where we'll take up the, uh, six items. We do not have an executive session today. It'll just be those six items. I'll see you guys in an hour.